I'd like to call the Stafford County School Board meeting for February 9th. To order, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Fallon.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hyrens.
Here.
Ms. Kidby.
Here.
Mr. McOsker.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
If everyone would please stand for a moment of silent and reflection and then I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in honoring our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to section two, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to awards and recognitions, we want to start with a very important one, which is 4.02, our proclamation designating the week of February 15th as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Ms. Kidby, would you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whereas school board clerks in each locality throughout the great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of his or her county or city as may be required by the school board, and whereas school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents and employees on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, and whereas school board clerks join with school boards to help ensure that students achieve their highest potential, and whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents and the V S B A Board of Directors, does the V S B A Board of Directors does hereby recognize the week of February 15th, 2016, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas the Stafford County School Board joins the Virginia School Board Association in recognizing the many and varied contributions of the school board clerks, and I'm going to add another whereas, and whereas Stafford County Public Schools has one of the finest school board clerks in the Commonwealth, now therefore be it proclaimed, on this ninth day of February 2016, that the Stafford County School Board also recognizes the week of February 15th, 2016, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week.
And our own Roberta Uring keeps us out of trouble all the time and we can't tell you how much we appreciate all that you do. So please accept this, your certificate suitable for framing, and a gift from the board. Thank you so much for all that you do. (applause).
Madam Chair, I think we need to do one more check throughout the Commonwealth. I bet that we have the only clerk that's a United States lawyer.
Yes.[261.14][261.14](applause).
And that's why she's the best.
Madam Chairman, I think we need to add Mrs. Kidby's additional whereas to this proclamation and make it official.
I think that we will be doing that, so we will be.
We can add Mr. Hyrens.
That's right. Next, we would also like to proclaim February as Career and Technical Education Month. Mr. McOsker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A proclamation to designate February as National Career and Technical Education Month. Whereas February 2016 has been designated National Career and Technical Education Month, and whereas CTE education offers instructional programs that prepare students for a productive future in various professional and technical careers, and whereas CTE educators serve mentors for students by providing strong classroom and student organization experiences that develop a positive tone for the implementation of career and technical programs, enabling students to rise to the many challenges of the future workforce, and whereas the dedicated efforts of our CTE educators have been made a profound difference in the lives of students across the Commonwealth by encouraging students to set career goals today and ensuring that the promise of future opportunities tomorrow, and whereas CTE programs contribute to building a strong economy in the Commonwealth of Virginia by educating the future citizens and workforce of the 21st century, and whereas CTE education administrators consistently provide students strong educational leadership opportunities throughout the Commonwealth, maintaining high academic standards for all students by ensuring a safe, pleasant, and nurturing environment, and whereas teachers, administrators, and students are entrusted to interact through professional organizations to provide direction and convey knowledge of skills relating to leadership and technical abilities, whereas the collaborative efforts of administrators, teachers, and students are instrumental in building a strong foundation in critical skills, ethics, and technical knowledge that equip confident young men and women for a technological society. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the school board on this ninth day of February, that February 2016 be recognized as Career and Technical Education Month by the Stafford County Public Schools. Sign, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McOsker. We have one last recognition is for our wonderful school counselors and for our designating the week of February 8th through 12th. Ms. Healy.
A proclamation to designate February 8th to 12th as National School Counseling Week. Whereas professional school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors implement comprehensive school counseling programs throughout Virginia's schools, and these programs are an important part of the educational process as students grow up in an increasingly complex world while facing the new and often difficult challenges of the 21st century, and where our school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and where our school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and where our school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become workforce and college-ready, and whereas comprehensive development developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school, now therefore be it proclaimed by the school board on this ninth day of February 2016, that the school board hereby designates February 8th to 12th as National School Counseling Week. So that means you have three days left to recognize your counselors.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to special presentations about our All-Century Learners.
I think we're set. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Benson, and our wonderful School Board Clerk, Roberta Uring. It is my pleasure to share with you our All-Centuries or C5W work with you this evening. I'd like to begin by drawing your attention to an excerpt from our current strategic plan along with language from our proposed planning document. And I share this with you to acknowledge that excellence is certainly not a new theme in Stafford. It was just as much a priority in 2012 and before as it is today. Still, we have a responsibility to engage in a continuous cycle of improvement by examining our current state and asking two essential questions. What are we doing well, and how can we be better tomorrow? The efficiency study that was done last year certainly provided us with a different lens, an outside lens, and a different insight to those two questions, and also during the course of last year, our state initiative to reexamine assessment practices, for example, our authentic performance assessments that replace some SOLs, provided us with some different ways of thinking, and I think drew a highlight to the importance of creating a balanced assessment model, and we also know that we need a balanced instructional model. We also gathered some teacher and principal feedback on our current state, and I know Dr. Benson in his visits has definitely gotten some student feedback as well, and as we look ahead to the development of our new strategic plan, we certainly want to be mindful of our commitment to continuous improvement. So one of the things that I know a lot of our schools do with their staffs, they look at their glows and their grows, so some of you've probably heard that before, and I thought we might start this evening by just examining some of the feedback that we got last year in terms of our path as a division and our glows and our grows, and we know that we've had a lot of success in our SOL results. In fact, we are the largest division that is fully accredited, so that's certainly a glow. We also know that because our students, our teachers have focused on response to intervention or RTI, as we refer to it, we've been able to meet the needs of a diverse group of learners, and teachers are able to work in professional learning communities or their PLCs to really target learning and help students who need very specific skills in order to pass that SOL test and to be successful in reading and math and all of the other curricula areas. Those groups come together to address that very specifically, and the other piece is our teachers really know their state standards very well. So those are certainly some glows. In terms of grows, last year when I met with the Teacher Advisory Committee, I asked them, okay, here's where we're doing really well. They basically named all of these areas as glows, but when I asked are there any kind of unintended consequences from focusing on the standards, and pretty unanimously that group was very vocal about feeling like sometimes they had lost their opportunities for authentic learning experiences because they were very focused on specific targeted learning objectives and specific standards, and sometimes they felt like they were working in silos and were not able to always make those real-life connections that they felt that they might have been able to make if they weren't under such a standards time crunch. And then the final thing that came out of that meeting, and I've certainly heard it in principals' meetings as well, is just the need to bring back joy in our profession in teaching and learning, and that's certainly something that's very important to me because learning is a social thing, and we want our students to learn, we want them to think critically, but we also want them to have fun. I think that's a really important part of our exploration into our journey with C5W. So last summer, to kick off our C5W work, it wasn't really called C5W then, but we pulled a group of folks together to develop an overarching learner profile to articulate what are those All-Century, other folks refer to them as 21st Century, we refer to them as All-Century because we know leaders who've been successful in any century were pretty adept at those All-Century skills. Our target audience, of course, is our students, but also our staff and community. We want to work together in the same way that we are expecting our students to go after these All-Century skills. We had a team of over 100 teacher, instructional coordinator, administrator representatives. We also had a representative from our world of business and higher education. And we began off, kicking off, just doing some visioning work, and we had some Legos, and we asked teachers to think about the ideal classroom. What would it look like? And so groups of folks collaborated, they talked about if you could do anything, imagine anything in a classroom, what would you want to happen? So we had some really creative classrooms, we had pets in classrooms, we had all kinds of maybe fire pits in classrooms, you know, you name it, we had it, but it provided a springboard for some great conversation about what we felt like we wanted our students to experience in learning. So the next push was to work in a team then to come up with five, and they had to narrow it to five. I believe we had maybe 12 groups, and in that group, they had to come up with five overarching All-Century learning skills, and it was really difficult for them to narrow it to five, but as you can see, we have one that was pretty consistent through all of them, communication, you're going to hear about that some more. We also had collaboration, which was another very popular piece that a lot of groups wanted to make sure that we included. We had a lot of conversation about what things are most important. So we narrowed it down to kind of our list, and then the next day, we looked at some existing profiles, and we used some of the leaders in this work in terms of education. Tony Wagner, for example, is a leader in 21st Century skills. We also looked at some of our surrounding divisions to see what they did in terms of developing a learner profile, and we know that there are several districts in Virginia who've already established something similar, but we really felt like we wanted this to be our own, we wanted our own stamp on it. So we had certain criteria that came out of that after we looked at some essential questions and looked at kind of the strengths and the weaknesses or limitations of the profiles that we examined. So we did some research. We realized after that second day of big group, we're talking 100 people, work, that we were really going to have to come back down to a smaller team to make some decisions in terms of really landing on how many, and I think I remember they wanted no more than seven because they felt like we couldn't focus on, we couldn't make everything, to quote from earlier in the evening, we couldn't make everything a priority. So we knew that we wanted to focus on seven or less key skills. We wanted one word, we wanted something that was easy to access and retrieve and commit to memory so that it would be part of our practice, and we had a small team kind of wrestle with those ideas, and we also talked about consensus, and we talked about how are we going to, when we take this back to a group of 100 people, how are we going to get 100 people on board with what we come up with today? And we decided in that smaller group that our consensus was really going to have to be an overwhelming majority. And at the end of the day, after much conversation, these are the skills that we felt were the most important for Stafford County students to have as part of their intentional learner profile. So when every student graduates from Stafford County Schools, and all along, we will be committed to focusing in these key areas. Communication, and a reminder, they're not in order of importance, but they are kind of in order of acceptance, they were the order that the committee landed on, communication first, collaboration second, critical thinking. We had lots of conversation about critical thinking, does problem solving come first, or is critical thinking part of problem solving, or is problem solving part of critical thinking? We landed on problem solving falling beneath critical thinking. We talked about creativity, and we know that included in that is that innovative work, citizenship, and finally wellness. We felt like it was very important to address the needs both physical, emotional, and social wellness, not only our students, but also our staff and our learning community. And so our final meeting for the summer was August 10th, and we reconvened. We were calling this the introductory, we were planning for the introductory phase because when our staffs came back, we wanted to have an in-common message, so we were able to reach consensus, we drafted some definitions, and we also planned for some initial implementation so that when staff came back, they had some kind of an All-Century common experience that would be fun, a fun kickoff to the year. And our schools came back with lots of ideas about how different schools went after that. And again, we started to think about what are the things that need to fall under each headings so that we know what we're looking for in each of those areas, and we also have a common understanding. So on Friday, October 23rd, we had a regrouping, we shared our initial implementation, we drafted, where we reviewed our draft, and we did a deeper dive into our content lens. So that looked like our social studies, science, math, language arts, exploratories, and technology. We broke out into very specific content groups. Before that time, we had been engaged in more of a vertical team look, so you may have had a kindergarten teacher and an earth science teacher together. For this particular activity, as we were really refining our definitions, we actually tried to put folks in their content area specifics so that they could do a deep dive, and so they were asking questions like, why do we teach social studies, science, math? What would we expect learning to look like when students are engaged in C5W in those areas? And so our next steps, because we know this is currently happening in pockets, this is not an idea that is so outlandish that it is not already happening in the best of situations. What hasn't happened to this point, I think, are two areas. One, we haven't been intentional about the skills we're going to specifically go after beyond SOLs, and the other piece is that we want all students to have this experience. It's not reserved for our focus students or our high-achieving students, it's really reserved for all students because we know that in order for learning to occur, students have to be engaged, and they have to have a reason why, an authentic reason, why do I really need to learn this? And so we want to put them in those experiences that are real and are important to them. We also are going to be looking at our authentic performance assessments to gain some ideas of where this is currently happening, and we've started doing learning walks in schools with our principals so that we can have some look fours. We have our categories now, since we've defined what communication or critical thinking looks like, then how does that show up in a learning walk in a classroom? We have an attached teacher names to it because we're just gathering baseline data right now, but I think this will be interesting information. It certainly provides great conversations when principals come back to be able to talk about what they've observed and the quality of instruction in that classroom. So there's kind of a shift from that hyper-focus on assessment, and specifically a multiple-choice assessment, to the quality of good, rich instruction in the classroom. And again, we know this is already happening, we just want to capture the places to begin with. We also want to include that kind of conversation in our professional learning communities. So we know, again, that's already happening in the best of, but we want to make it common practice everywhere in our division. And so the checks kind of give you an idea of where we are now. We'll continue to work on development opportunities as we move forward. We really haven't named full implementation until 2017, 2018. So we wanted to have a lot of time to have discussions, to get feedback, to get a full understanding of what it is we're going for as a division before we would expect full implementation. That being said, I have to share with you that we have a lot of folks who have already just kind of dug into this work and who are just hitting the ground running, and that's certainly okay with us. And then continuous improvement thereafter. So in concluding, we know that improvement is never done, and we owe it to our entire learning community and especially our students to ask continually, ask those two questions. What are we doing well, and how can we be better tomorrow than we are today? And before I provide time for questions, I would love for our development team members, the weather kind of threw a little curve at us and some confusion tonight, but if you are on our part of our development team, I'd love for you to stand up so we can give you a little round of applause. Thank you so much. This was an amazing team, and this is part of them.[1512.65][1512.65](applause). And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mrs. Neely, I have one question for you. Did you have a summer?[1529.12][1529.12](laughing).
It was a great summer, actually.
You did this one, you did the Educational Specials Committee with?
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that one.
Yeah, yeah.
But the good thing is, is they all merged together, really. It's really the same kind of work.
Yes, it is. Well, this was great. Thank you very much, and thank you for all you've done all summer long.
Absolutely, thank you.
Madam Chair, along those lines, if we could say thank you to the staff, you know, the teaching staff who came in voluntarily during their summer to put this together. So thank you, and thank you for leading them.
Absolutely.[1563.24][1563.24](applause).
Ms. Kidby.
Madam Chair, if I may, as you're going through these walkthroughs, look fours, if you will, and you're identifying where so many of our teachers are also already embracing some of these practices, if you will, is your goal to put together some kind of a document that speaks to methodologies that can be used within the classroom to enhance this vision, or is your goal to just allow the professional educator to develop that as they will?
You're already thinking about the next iteration of continuous improvement, I can tell. I think that we certainly don't want to make this a mystery, and that's where the common conversation comes in, and so I think there are going to be some key documents that we would use to drive our work. Again, we're working on one now that would just explicitly define each of those categories, and then also define what is, so when a principal's coming into my classroom, before they're ever even attaching my name to something, what is it that they're looking for? Because the last thing we want to do is make it a secret, right? We want folks to embrace it, and they can't embrace it if it's a secret. So yes, we would put together some documents, and I think that, you know, that has implication for the vertical work that we do on vertical teams. Literacy has already started that work, math, science have already started that work, they've already added, and these guys just kind of take off. I have to be honest, I have to give a shout-out to our instructional team as well because they've already added it, for example, in their APA assessment, so it's a natural occurrence. So yeah, I think it's going to be twofold. We're going to look at it in grade-level teams, and we're also going to look at by content strands and just by overall, you know, learners, whether you're in preschool or high school. You know, good learning and good teaching, it's not that different.[1694.24][1694.24](laughing) You'd be amazed.
You talked about the C5W as almost it's independent from the SOLs.
It's a great question.
However, can't it support the SOLs?
Absolutely, and I'm so glad you asked that because that was something that I intended to mention as we were going through the slides. Certainly, we are a public school institution, we're still bound by the SOLs, and so this is not independent of the SOLs. I'll give you an example. So yesterday, I was talking with a group of middle-school literacy folks, and I just pulled out a seventh-grade lesson, and I gave them two examples of what you might do with this, let's just have a conversation. And so I gave them two statements, one, and I'm going to mix them up a little bit now, it was about technology because I'm thinking middle-school, right, seventh grade. So one was technology has led to better citizens in our society, and the other one was basically it's the demise of our society. You know, you pick a stand, or teachers could choose a stand, but I just kind of threw it out to the group and said, what could you do with that? Think about, here are your standards, they know their standards. The problem is, though, one of the things that we talked about is there are a whole bunch of oral language standards that kind of get, I'm not saying they're not taught, but they're not as focused on typically as those ones they're going to be tested on, and that's just, that's not okay with us because we want more for our students. And so they had great ideas, they talked about, well, we could have a debate, they would have to do research because they've got a. got to prove their argument, whatever stand they take. It's innately getting at citizenship. They could work collaboratively in groups and have debate teams, for example. They might take on, someone said, for creativity, they could take on the role of someone, you know, maybe Bill Gates or a different identity and you're the person defending that. And then meanwhile, you've covered all of, you haven't just covered these SOLs, they've been authentically engaged in learning them. That's the key difference. We don't want to just cover SOLs. We've all been in that test where we memorize it and then you ask us three months later, the test that we could have gotten an A on, or we maybe did get an A on, we take it again and we get an F on it. Because we didn't really learn it, we just memorized it. And we want more for our students than that and for our teachers.
It sounds like an amazing opportunity for so many of our educators that are already embracing this, to be able to embrace it even more. Thank you so much for doing this work.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the board? In closing, I just thank you, Carrie, for coming. I've had the honor of hearing this before, since I got to hear it on Monday with the Stafford Education Foundation and briefing them as well, giving them an overview. It just sounds like such exciting work. I guess I would ask though, Dr. Benson, where next do you see the board engaging or how would you all like the board to engage? I'm going to direct it to Dr. Benson, then I'll let him figure out where it goes.
It actually will get incorporated into our strategic plan. Most divisions in Virginia have been thinking about these things for a little while and have incorporated them into learner profiles. And basically what they're doing is they're making a promise to the community that as a graduate of our school system, these are things that our young people will be able to do, whether they're going off to college or they're going to work military and that they're ready for citizenship. And if you think about these things, they transcend an individual path that a student might take. So they'll be a key component of our strategic plan moving forward and again, a part of our promise to the community. And it's also fulfilling, one of the areas that the efficiency studies said that we needed some focus on, which is that overarching framework of expectations for the school division.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to citizen comments. This evening, there are two sections of citizen comments. The first one is related solely to the public hearing on the FY 2017 budget, so comments in that area will just be on the budget. Then there will be a second portion of public comments that you may speak on any of the topics for this evening. Let me give the overall parameters for public comment and then we will start with the public hearing. I do have some speaker cards, but I'll get to that next. So any individual wishing to comment on the FY 2017 budget may do so at this time by responding to my invitation or if you have signed in. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. You will see there are three dots up there at two minutes, you will be in green, at one minute it will go to yellow and at, when your time of three minutes is expired, it will be red. When it gets to red, you have five seconds to wrap up in making sure that we do that so that we make sure we move through everybody well tonight, also in light of the weather, but also just in the interest of time. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. I will start with the people who have signed in. If you do desire to speak on the budget, I would ask that you all line up behind the speakers. If you have not already signed in, please sign in on the clipboard, I guess to your left, my right. And if you all would line up so we can move through our speakers. So I have Angela Hensley and Teri Welborn and anyone who else would like to speak, if you would line up behind them, please.
Do we have our notes? Are there notes we wanted to turn?
Hand them to our clerk.
Excuse me, I've been sick. My name is Angela Hensley. I'm the parent of a fifth grader at Moncur Elementary School and a seventh grader at Shirley Heim. My address is 111 Channel Cove. I'm a longtime resident of Aquia Harbor. My budget concern is tiny in terms of these millions of dollars that are spent. I originally addressed this last fall with what I consider to be the leadership team, Dr. Benson, Associate Superintendent of Instruction, Pam Cale, and whoever I thought should see this. Basically, last year, when my sixth grader's first report card came home on the fancy watermark paper that when you copy it, it says void, I noticed a mistake right smack in the middle of it where it says capital S, small o, small l, apostrophe s. And it popped right out at me. I'm not an English teacher. In fact, my undergraduate degree is health and PE and my master's is curriculum instructions. I saw that, I was upset about it. I sent a letter to a handful of people I thought should be concerned about it, explaining my point. And then I did get a response from Pam Cale, who said she would call me, and she did. And basically what she said is, oh no, we're really embarrassed, but this paper is really expensive. And at the top of my head, I believe she said $140,000 and that they didn't have money to replace it. And I was like, can you black it out or something, you know? And she said, you know, it's expensive and we have to use the paper. Okay, so I let it go and looked at it the rest of the year. And then fast forward to this last report card and again, it showed up. So what I'm asking, and I have a visual here because it's hard to people understand if they don't see it. But right smack in the middle of the report card in the red where I circled, is where the error is. And I didn't even teach elementary school, I know that's what this looks like. And we strive for excellence and I understand that, but when these errors are on the middle of a report card that every middle school and high school student sees, Mrs. Cale said nobody else pointed this out. But unfortunately, when people keep seeing it, even the educated adults think, well, if it's on the report card, it must be correct. So what I am asking is that the school board and Stafford County find a couple hundred thousand dollars somewhere to please throw away this paper and start printing our report cards on a paper that says, "Respect, Integrity, Grades, Academics," has the county seal, and remove that incorrect SOL for us. That's it, I'm fairly easy to please. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Madam Chair, Dr. Benson. My name's Teri and I'm the chairperson of the SCA Transportation ESP Caucus, our bus drivers, monitors, and pairs. I'm here tonight to speak to the budget and a living competitive wage. When I started this job 20 years ago, I was working 7.5 hours a day and making $7.76 per hour with the expectation of pay increases each year. About seven years ago, when my oldest daughter started college, the county decided they would reduce full-time hours from seven to six, seven and a half to six and a half hours. This cost me $250 a month. I thought, okay, by the time I have to pay back my loans with raises, I should be close to that. Then the middle daughter started college, then the youngest daughter started college, and the raises weren't coming. I still thought, okay, by the time the youngest graduates and I have to pay back my loans, they have to have given us an increase in pay and I should be able to afford it. She graduated a year and a half ago and I'm still struggling to pay the loans back. I'm still making $150 less a month than seven years ago. When I started driving, it was to supplement our income. As the economy declined, so did construction work. And gradually, my income became almost our sole source of income. Every year, we hear that there's no money for increases. Last year, we were told that this would be the year that bus driver pay would be increased to a competitive wave. That didn't happen. I'm not even counting on next year being the year of the bus driver because you only have a 2% increase in the budget. In your budget proposal, it says that you will analyze paraprofessional bus driver monitor and school nurse compensation models based on market-driven data to upgrade the pay scales for these employee populations. This has been said before and there was no follow-through. Please follow-through. You keep saying, maybe next year, we can give an increase in pay. Your maybe next year kept turning into my maybe next year. Maybe next year, I'll be able to get my car fixed. Maybe next year, I can get my husband on my insurance. Maybe next year, I will get the life insurance. I'm out of next years. As some of you know, my husband passed away two and a half weeks ago and at that time, I had just $100 in the bank. After 20 years with this county, I only bring home $1,531.70 a month base pay. I don't know how I will live on that. I would like to stay living and working in Stafford County, but without a living or competitive wage increase. I fear that after giving more than 20 years of service to this county, I'm going to have to move and try for another county. Please make this coming year the year of the bus drivers and monitors and pay us a living wage. Thank you.
And anyone else for the budget, if you could line up? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Crane and I am the coordinator of Safety and Driver Training for Stafford County Public Schools Transportation Department. There are a few facts that I'd like you to consider while you're working on salary scales for transportation staff members. Stafford County Public Schools competes for transportation staff not only with other school districts, but with other employers that require CDL drivers. Recently, two drivers that drove for Stafford County Public Schools for a number of years has left our employment for better opportunities. One has gone to drive the, and I say that, I trip over this, the monography RV, and while another one went to work in warehouse distribution. A CDL is a valuable tool for making a good living. Both drivers were sad to leave transportation, both loved their jobs. Monitors too can seek better employment opportunities such as big box stores that often start at around $10 per hour. Our office staff works diligently to try and offset the pay difference by trying to create an enjoyable work environment for our staff. Every year, office staff donates their personal funds to purchase the groceries needed and we host a pancake breakfast every single fall. At the end of last year, we stood over hot grills on a hot summer June day to provide hot dogs for our staff. And just this past fall, our director, Mr. Barry Suddeth, and our two supervisors, Mr. Kerry Rosell and Ms. Barbara Lancaster, kissed a real live pig when transportation met its goal in raising unitway funds. But you can flip all the pancakes and kiss all the pigs you want, but if your people get paid on the first of the month and are broke by the 21st of the month, they are going to leave to find opportunities to better serve their family's financial needs. Last week, I listened to Dr. Benson as he presented the budget to the SCA Town Hall. He expressed concern that there was a 25% drop in applications, teacher applications. As coordinator of training and safety, I can tell you that the size of the driver training classes has dramatically decreased. From August, from August 2015 to January 16, we are down about 47% in our classroom training size. For monitors, the drop is even more dramatic. We have in this time frame only trained eight new monitor hires. That is a drop of nearly 300% from last year at this time. I'm sure you know that there is a national driver shortage, but with this rate of decline, our already short staff situation could become crippling in the oncoming school years. It really is very simple. The demand is high and the supply is low. It is our hope that the board will understand that unless the pay scale better reflects the market, Stafford will continue to struggle with its staffing needs. Thank you.
Next, we will move to general citizens comments. The same parameters apply. I'm not going to go through all of those, everyone has heard that. I will read through the list that I have in front of me. If you all could line up, when your name is called in a line, the first 5, I will call, then I'll call the five, and then there will be an open invitation for anyone else to speak. I'd like to start with Carissa Herrick, then Lisa Renard, Dan Richard, Anne Jacobson, and Timothy Mance.
Good evening, members of the board and special guests. My name is Carissa Herrick and I'm a seventh and eighth grade math teacher at Shirley Heim Middle School. When first nominated to join the All Centuries All Learning Team, I was a little bit apprehensive. I've been to many conferences before where everything sounds good in theory, but how can you ever apply it to math was the question. In this, my second year of teaching, I've started to answer that question and it goes beyond just the algebraic expression on my shirt. In our school, we have created many opportunities for our students to be collaborators, communicators, critical thinkers, creators, citizens, and to be well. One activity in particular comes to mind. As a PLC, we planned for students to develop a winter scene by having them work together to solve math problems as a team. Once all team members answered each question correctly with proper work, they got to add a new aspect to the scene. We had some interesting snowmen and snowwomen doing different dance moves like the whip and nae nae. They were elated to be creating something and had no idea that they were using their communication and collaboration skills with three other teammates. I think the most interesting part was the critical thinking that was used when students were addressed with the problem, draw a circle with a diameter of the square root of nine inches. It was then that these citizens had to put their brains together to create a solution to the ever-important question of, how are we going to do that? By not giving up and reflecting on previous incidents, it was a breeze for them to then create a circle with a radius of the square root of four inches. Through reflection, they were able to learn from their previous mistakes and be more successful the second time around, showing students how wellness can work in the classroom environment. I aspire as an educator, not only to have these skills, but to demonstrate them in how I teach. Even if that means I'm asking my fellow collaborators to star in film and direct a music video about slope to Adele's "Hello." I've learned that while I may not be the best singer or dancer in the world, my creativity can get a whole class of eighth grade students mimicking a choir singing about how y equals mx plus b at 8:30 in the morning, I might add. This unit also gave us the opportunity to challenge students and to find slope of objects in real life. We opened up the conversation about why should a table have a zero slope? It's designed that way on purpose, well, what's the purpose behind it? We also asked about the relationship between the slope of the stairs as well as the stair railing. Why were they the same slope? Challenging students to critically think about why something is made and how math works is just another way that we engage our students. Maybe one day, they will be creating something and slope will come into the conversation. Overall, I am seeing more and more opportunities in the classroom for all of these wonderful attributes and I think that not only are my students becoming better people, but I am becoming a better and more engaging teacher by incorporating them in the classroom. I look forward to seeing how Stafford County continues to implement these skills into the classroom and I can't wait for the wonderful lessons to come. Thank you all for your support from the board and on this new and bit daunting project. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for coming.
Are you noticing a trend in our attire? I'm Lisa Renard, I am a teacher at Mountain View High School, and I'm here tonight to talk to you a little bit about the All Century Skills from a high school point of view. From the advantage of the folks who nurture our students in these last four years of their K-12 education, the All Century Skills Initiative is more than welcome. It answers the question of not just what we teach our kids, but why and how. The All Century Skills provide a response to the question, what does it really mean to be a graduate of Stafford County Public Schools? A lot of thought went into that, over the summer, went into answering that question. Important aspects of the work that we did had to do with considering what employers say about that, what colleges and universities say about that, and what sort of competencies will best equip our graduates to be lifelong learners. The skill categories that you've seen that we settled on after a lot of rebate, debate and revision, those are the ones that will help make Stafford County students effective and enabled as both individuals and members of the school. as both individuals and members of a society that is increasingly interconnected and global. High schools in Stafford County are embracing these All-Centry Skills already. In the first year, this initiation phase, our high schools are taking steps to ensure that the faculty and staff have a deep understanding of what the five Cs and a W are. At Mountain View, we spent time examining the ways our existing IB learner profile traits embody these six competencies. And teachers throughout the school have students working to develop these skills, but maybe more importantly, understanding and appreciating why that's a good thing to do. Brookpoint also spent some time examining the correlation between the existing learner profile and the All-Centry Skills. Teachers there reflected on those traits that they felt were particular strengths, examined ways to enhance others, all on the premise that the All-Centry Skills are not just about what we want our students doing, but we want what we want to cultivate as our school culture and the premise of our school system. Likewise, North Stafford used the five Cs and a W as the basis for team building early in the year. New teachers there are already being trained to do lesson planning using a template that asks them how they're engaging these aspects in their lessons. So while it might be tempting to dismiss All-Centry Initiative as superfluous in some way to the day-to-day business of educating students, the truth is, the work that we're doing right now to pinpoint, understand, and incorporate these competencies provides an important shared vision of why we educate students in the first place. The end result is going to be Stafford County graduates who learn with enthusiasm, engage meaningfully with significant issues, use critical and creative thinking skills to take responsible action, who act with a sense of personal integrity, explore new ideas, exhibit resiliency in the face of challenge. Students who are well-equipped to balance various aspects of their lives and attend to not only their own well-being, but the communities in which they belong. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Benson. My name is Dan Reichert and I'm a 5th grade teacher at the awesome and amazing Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School up in North Stafford. You know, I was going to bring along three of my scholars today, but the weather got in the way of that, you know? So I would invite all of you to come and talk to them because, you know, they can tell you the true essence of what the All-Centry Skills are about at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School and, you know, how they live them in their everyday life. But, the All-Centry Skills, the cool thing about them is, they're a part of who we are. You know, it's not one extra initiative. It's not one extra thing. You know, at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School, we've developed the Barrett Academy that focuses on the five Cs and the W. You know, just yesterday, Mrs. Austin and I were eating lunch with the scholars who were going to come along with us. And she asked them, you know, "What does engagement look like in the classroom?" And we were absolutely taken aback by their responses because, you know, they told us, you know, "The most important thing, Mr. Reichert, Mrs. Austin, is that, you know, our scholars are working, we're a team, we're a family." And so if you walk down the hall on any given day of Kate Waller Barrett, you're going to see our scholars looking adults in the eye, giving them firm handshakes, carrying on conversation, because those are the things that we find important for our scholars. Those are any century, all-century skills. Whenever we're teaching lessons, you know, the All-Centry Skills are a part of how we plan. You know, our students are constantly collaborating. They come up and teach in front of the classroom to show their learning. They're standing up, using accountable talk, you know, talking to others in respectful manners to show that, "Yeah, I really have this down." So the All-Centry Skills are a part of everything that we do at the elementary level. And it's just an exciting initiative that we have taking off here in Stafford, because these are things that our students are going to need for the rest of their lives. If possible, I have a video here of one of my scholars. I'll just show you a quick little portion. You know, but the cool thing is, she talks about how we've taken the Barrett Academy and we've really taken all of these All-Centry Skills and put them into our everyday life. So, here it goes.
This hymn's called "Five Core Values," a CDU to CUP by Anna Kendrick. I got a four on my ocean's test. One on my math test, too. Put so much effort into studying. Going to shoot for fours all the year through. Excellence. Academic excellence. Putting effort into all you do. I show respect with eye contact. I always pay attention, oh. Say yes or no, yes ma'am, too. Teamwork. Teamwork. We are a big family. We dissected fish guts, used a block leg during math, oh. And together, used a dichotomous key. I've got a heart as big as Texas. Don't let nobody sit alone. I include all my classmates in my games and activities. I give you everything I own. Leadership. Leadership. Doesn't mean you are the boss. And I like to take a step back and not be the bigger person, oh. I also like to start Chance Academy. Barrett Academy. Following the core values. They are respect and hard academic excellence, oh. Leadership and teamwork. Academy. Barrett Academy. Following the core values. They are respect and hard academic.
So, that is one of my world-famous Room 21 Reichert rock stars. And she was, you know, excited to bring that to you. So, you know, I think the cool thing is, even in kindergarten, you know, the All-Centry Skills are a part of everything that we do. And it's just so exciting to be a part of this, to be a part of Stafford County and where we're going with the All-Centry Skills here in the future. So, my scholars who are planning to come are, we're going to sign up for the next citizens comment and I'll bring them along. And, you know, they practiced for about a week to talk to you guys tonight. So, they'll be in soon enough. So, thank you very much and have a wonderful evening.
So I've got Anne Jacobson, Timothy Mance, then Peter Augrum, and Jacob Leicher. If y'all could start to line up, thank you.
I don't want to follow that. That's not fair.
Ms. Jacobson, I wouldn't, I wouldn't either.
I don't sing. I didn't bring video, I'm sorry. My name is Anne Jacobson and I live at 376 Aquia Creek Road. Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Benson. I am Brookpoint's After Prom Chairperson and I have run the Muffin Cart for the last four years. As several of you know, I worked very closely with Speaker Howell's office to get the federally permitted exemption for fundraising passed and signed by Governor McAuliffe. It passed easily with large bipartisan support. Muffin Cart is the sole fundraiser for our after prom. We keep an average of 500 kids safe and alcohol-free on the most statistically dangerous night of the year. I personally feel that the lives that are at risk from drunk driving on prom night are equally as important as any concerns about nutrition. Prior to Muffin Cart, our volunteers burned out running tons of fundraisers, taking entire weekends year-round to earn less money than we make from running the Muffin Cart just two days a week. Participation in Muffin Cart is strictly voluntary for students and teachers. We only sell during second block. We're there for three to four minutes and the teachers appreciate the short break. Our selections are all prepackaged and labeled for individual sale. Muffin Cart has been running for years prior to the food guidelines being sent down from the federal government. We didn't start it at Brookpoint. We borrowed the idea from North Stafford, who'd been running it since 2006. No one cared what we sold until the schools had to change what they were allowed to offer. Now, all of a sudden, when the same food that was sold for seven years is being offered, everyone is up in arms over the children's nutrition and whether they'll eat lunch after having a snack. The Nutrition Department is concerned over losing lunch sales. Their lunch sales have been declining because children don't like what's being offered, not because they had a bag of Cheez-Its. Their sales are down for the same reason our Muffin Cart sales declined when we had to switch to the new snacks. The cost of the new food is high, the profit margin is low, and the kids don't want the items. It's not rocket science. Everyone's sales went down because of the new nutritional guidelines. The data shows that meal sales are down division-wide, not just in the high schools, which the only ones even talking about the fundraiser exemption. There's not one bit of data to show that there's any relation to Muffin Cart and lunch sales. What if more kids are bringing lunch? What if the selections offered by the cafeteria on Muffin Cart days aren't as popular? What if the kids just don't want what the school is selling? And if we're really concerned over the nutritional health of our kids, some of these kids left home to catch the bus at 6:00 in the morning. If they have third lunch, they aren't getting any food until 12:10. That's six hours with nothing. There was an article in the Freelance Star just after your meeting about how King George is adding extra food times to their day to improve the attention span of their kids. And actually, it's better for the kids' health and weight to eat smaller amounts less often. The snacks they get help re-energize them and keep their blood sugar's levels steadier throughout the day. Lastly, the issue came up about the number of fundraisers. Those of you who've had high schoolers know that each group is responsible for raising their own funds. Rotse, sports teams, band, hosodeka, you name it, they all need funds and after-prom is no different. The legislation was crafted to allow each district to make their own decisions. You are allowed in the legislation 30 fundraisers per school, and that's as specific as they made it. Don't force the groups to compete and end up where nobody gets any benefits. Everyone's being asked to do more and more with less and less, as you all well know. Allow us and all the other groups in the school the ability to help our children. I would ask that you allow up to the 30 fundraisers as written in the legislation and let the schools work with their groups to determine the parameters of their fundraiser. Keep in mind, not every school is interested and not every group is interested either. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks.
Hi. Happy New Year. Timothy Mance, 62 Olive Place, Falmouth, Virginia. I'm here tonight to talk about the Stat Engineering Program at Stafford High School. Tonight, we're going to meet the regional champs from Stafford High School and the robotics team. Congratulations, team. Proud of you. Most of these students behind us were in the Stat Engineering Program at Stafford High School. And last year, we eliminated the program. We need to bring it back. The students that stand before you, I witnessed at the regional competition with over 50 high schools a month ago. And it was very competitive, mostly private schools, some public schools, all from Fairfax County, Prince William County, Manassas, you name it, they were there, Richmond. At 4:00, Stafford High School Robotics Team was still standing. So who went home? Brookpoint Robotics Team High School went home. The Governor's School of Stafford County went home. James Monroe High School went home. Fraricksburg Academy went home. All the schools in Spotsylvania County went home. The only high school in this area that was still standing at the end of that competition was Stafford High School. These students aspire to be engineers. Let's bring back the Stat Engineering Program at Stafford High School. As a Boy Scout leader and Scout master of the largest Boy Scout troop in Stafford County, last year, I took the boys, now young men, to West Point and we learned about engineering. Last November, I took the boys, now young men, to the United States Naval Academy. And in two weeks, I'm going to take the young men down to Hampton, Virginia, to NASA's Virginia Air and Space Museum to learn about engineering and robotics. And they're going to earn the Robotics Merit Badge. So we're doing our part. I'm doing my part. I asked the Board to do their part. Reconsider and bring back the Stat Engineering Program at Stafford High School. And I'm so very proud of our regional competition winners that you're going to hear about tonight. I thought they were going to go before me, but they didn't, but they'll be up here soon. And good luck at State in Richmond. And I hope we have the state champions right here in our chambers tonight. And they come back as state champions. And they've got a fantastic coach. And I appreciate the science teacher taking the lead on this. Ms. Luddington, God bless you. Thank you for stepping up and volunteering. And to close, I just want to reiterate, please, please reconsider and bring the Stat Engineering Program back to Stafford High School. Thank you.
So I have Mr. Augrum, Jacob Leicher, Ramona Crane, and Duke D. Eugenio. I probably butchered that.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Benson, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Pete Augrum. I'm the track and field coach at Stafford High. And I'm here tonight to ask you to approve Action Item 10.05, the Reprogramming VPSA Project Funds and Funding Strategy for the Repair Track Project at Stafford High School. Last spring, I made Ms. Mallory, our school athletic director, aware that our track was in extremely bad shape. The damage to the track was not just cosmetic due to normal wear and tear, but the track had sustained additional damage during the installation of the turf field. The decision was then made to inform county staff that our track was in need of extensive repair. I was at the inspection of the track with the county staff in August where it was determined that approximately a quarter of the track needed to get replaced for safety issues. And I can tell you that that was a conservative estimate at a quarter. Currently, the track is in such bad shape, we have to move where we practice certain technical aspects, like our block starts, even the, watching where we take off on long jump and pole vault because of the bare spots where the rubber is completely gone. We're down to bare pavement in those areas. When it rains, on the visitor's side, we get flooding out two to three lanes on the track. As the water pools there, it'll seep through the surface, loosening the adhesive that bonds the rubber to the pavement, again, causing more issues. You can actually, on the backstretch here, out in lanes four, five, and six, where the rubber will slap on the pavement as you walk down the track, let alone run on it. I've had kids who have been practicing hurdles on the backstretch who have started and a piece has just pulled up underneath their feet. The track is simply no longer able to be used in the capacity it was intended to. Other than the safety issues we're facing, we host our two home track meets at Brookpoint. We cannot host at Stafford High School. It's a disappointment not only to myself, but to our athletes, parents, and alumni. With the new track facilities in place, Stafford can once again host the Stafford Relays. A meet that was held at Stafford for at least 25 years. I know of alumni that competed back in the '70s. It was one of the best meets in the state. State records were made there. And it's a part of our pride and our heritage. And we want to bring it back. I've had coaches across the state ask me for the last 11 years that I've been here, "When are you bringing them back?" And the only response I can give is, "When I have a track." I recognize, I'm here tonight to ask that two other high school tracks, both of which we currently compete on, be moved back in the rotation. I also realize the great amount of time, effort, and money that have been distributed to Stafford High to support the rebuilding projects. However, I ask for your careful consideration and approval of this item. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Benson. I'm Jacob Leicher. I'm a former runner at Stafford High School at 17 Ironwood Road. I just graduated Virginia Military Institute. I competed there four years in track and field. I'm also now assistant coach at Mary Washington, University of Mary Washington. At the beginning of my freshman year of high school, we resurfaced the track. We did the minimum. The same is to be expected if you do not approve the funds that Coach Augrum just talked about. And in my four years of racing, I never got the opportunity to actually compete on the Stafford High School track. And in the four years that my brother competed right after that, he never, he only got one opportunity to compete at the track because of special circumstances. The track was always crowded for practice. We need another two lanes on the outside of the track, which couldn't be done with the funds when they just resurfaced the track when I was a freshman. All the other schools I competed at in high school and all the tracks I competed at in college were all eight-lane tracks. Also, it'd be amazing, just as Coach Augrum talked about, to bring back the Stafford Relays. My father competed at Stafford Relays in 1979. And he talked about how teams from New York would come, how it was under the lights. It was the grand rubberized track. Well, that was back when a six-lane rubberized track, all-surface, sufficed as the nicest track in the area. Now, Stafford High School has the least adequate track in the area. It sits right next to 95. It's a great venue. It has the new turf in the middle. It's a perfect, ideal place to run track, to have a great meet, have a great time. But they need the extra money to make the track truly great. I said that you take careful consideration in re-appropriating the funds. And I thank you for your time and have a good evening.
I think Ms. Crane spoke earlier- I think Ms. Crane spoke earlier, but she is listed. Is she still in the audience? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, board, Chair, Dr. Benson. My name is Duke D. Eugenio. I'm an eleventh grader at Stafford High School, and I'm the boys' captain of the cross-country track teams. I'm speaking on the motion, like Coach Augrum and Coach Leicher, to push necessary renovations to the Stafford High School track back another two years. We're looking to get them maintained as moved up because our track is the only six-lane high school track in the area. The potholes and freeze-thaw effect that were mentioned earlier caused some significant concerns. There are issues with bubbling in the track, and we actually, on the backstretches Augrum was talking about, have had issues where kids will bounce up and down like a trampoline on the track. And recently, during Snowstorm Jonas, Bridget, our girls' captain and I, went to the track, and we shoveled the entire track as we usually do, so you can try and get workouts in because it's difficult to work out when we have no track to work on. And the day after we worked on the track, we got it all clear, we came back to do a workout, and the track was covered in water because the lip that was installed with a turf field was there, is too high, and the track has been compressed down so far and in certain places just isn't there, that it was puddling water all throughout where we had been, and it froze. Additionally, during that time, there were portions that weren't underwater because they were like islands that were actually pieces of ice where water had seeped underneath the track, come below it, frozen, expanded, and there were just frozen lumps of ice. So even after that, we dealt for probably a week of just bricks of ice sitting underneath the track, rendering it unusable. It was interesting because I was talking to two of the captains, Julie Squante and Henrik Anderson of the Mountain View team, and they were talking about how we never host meets at Stafford, and we were like, they're, oh, I wonder why, like, what's the big issue? So we had them out, and they were astounded at the fact that there were potholes and issues, and it more resembled a cross-country course than a track. And so we had issues with that, and I mentioned to them that it was a possibility that they would be getting a track ahead of us, and they laughed at me, and they were like, well, what are you talking about? Like, why is this even a thing? Because they run on a more newly resurfaced eight-lane track, as does Colonial Forge, and they were both concerned. They're like, like, no, we need to have all of the tracks because we haven't been able to have any meets at our home track, which is difficult. So in closing, I ask that you consider moving Stafford up in the rotation, and thank you.
I have two more names for Bridget. Okay, I know he said it right. Abbiatello and Mary Abbiatello. If you all could come forward. Anyone else who wishes to speak, who has not signed up, if you all would sort of line up to the side so you can just follow these two young ladies, and then if, and then not to forget to sign into the clipboard if you haven't already signed in. Bridget, go ahead.
Members of the school board, good evening. My name is Bridget Abbiatello, a current senior and girls' captain of the Stafford High School Track and Cross Country Team. Our team has been nothing but successful under the wings of our coaches and dedicated athletes so far. So far, producing numerous state champions and collegiate athletes, including myself, who will be running for a Division One institution of fall next year. Our track is in bitter shape at the moment. In all four years I have experienced at Stafford, our school is the only school in the county who does not hold home track meets. This is due to four lanes and rough surfaces. Our track has numerous potholes, which can be dangerous for athletes who practice on it. Not only this, but the track has not been resurfaced in over ten years. Because of this, running on the track can be dangerous. It is the equivalent as running on pavement. This can result in overbearance for athletes' legs, causing long-term injury as severe as stress fractures. I believe from the success that is brought to the Stafford High School Track and Cross Country Teams, future teams should have the benefit of a better running environment, including the creation of a brand-new track as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Members of the board and Dr. Benson, good evening. My name is Mary Abbiatello. I live at eighty-nine Hamlin Drive in South Stafford. My husband and I have lived in Stafford for almost twenty years. We have gone through all the growing pains of Stafford. We started at Grefton, we moved on to Conway, we moved into Dixon, and we are here at Stafford. My daughter is currently, as she said, a senior here at Stafford. We didn't start out as a running family. We were soccer. Really, we had no clue as to running. We believe, though, my husband was supposed to do this, so we, he and I, believe track and cross-country prepares our student athletes for so many of life's lessons. It teaches them to set high goals and to persevere. These student athletes understand what commitment is about. My daughter has shoveled this track for several years. My son before her did the same. We would ask that you put Stafford High School at the top of the list for the change to the track. It will not benefit my two children who have already gone through, but for the future of the upcoming teams, we ask that you do this. I am right now the president of the booster club for our athletic teams, and I've been volunteering for the team for six years. We do everything we can to help our athletes. But we ask that you strongly consider resurfacing the track, adding the additional lanes to ensure our student athletes have a safe and competitive environment to reach new goals for the future. My daughter has competed at Stafford on the lane. It was during a middle school meet, before the middle school meet, the county meet was moved to other schools. It's very sad that we can't even hold our own meets at our own school. Coach Augrum would love to bring back the Stafford Relays. They have been asked about. It is something that we feel is important and a moment of pride for our athletes to have that ability to say, this is our school. I think we need to show our athletes we are committed to them. They have given every bit of commitment to us. And in the long run, no pun intended, our Stafford student athletes will make you proud. Thank you for your time.
Come on down. Whoever wants to go first, just come on down. If you want, come on even closer up so you can just go in and then sign the clipboard at the end.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson. My name's Dirk Maurer. I live at four Abraham Court in Stafford, and I'm the chairman of the Stafford County Republican Committee. I have something I'd like to read you very briefly. Resolution of the Stafford County Republican Committee to overturn the school board's policy on restricting political activity on school grounds during non-instructional school hours. Whereas the overwhelming majority of county, town, and city school boards and school administrations allow political parties to hold meetings and other activities on school grounds to include King George County, Fredericksburg City, Prince William County, Spotsylvania County, and Loudoun County. Whereas the Stafford County Republican Committee appeals to the common sense of the Stafford County School Board to allow political parties the same rights, benefits, and privileges as provided other local jurisdictions. Whereas the Stafford County School Board allows nonprofit, religious, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, sports organizations, and other entities to use the school facilities, be it resolved that the Stafford County Republican Committee requests equal and fair treatment of its membership to allow the use of county-owned and taxpayer-funded facilities following the exact same guidelines and protocol used for the aforementioned entities. This resolution was passed last night, February eighth, by unanimous vote of the Stafford County Republican Committee. Citizen involvement in the political process is critical to the health of our republic. You all know that. Political parties is one of the main ways that most citizens engage in that involvement. We just ask for equal treatment and equal access to the taxpayer-funded facilities for all political parties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Maurer, don't forget to sign in. Sorry. Come on down. Come on in, start speaking, then sign at the end, and we'll keep everybody moving. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Shirocky. I live at two-ten Midshipman Circle. I'm in the Griffiths-Widewater District. Good evening, Stafford County School Board and Dr. Benson. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I would like to use my time to bring your attention to current issues at Stafford, Shirley Heim Middle School, and the Assistant Principal, Mr. Grayson, and Principal, Mrs. McGraw. My two oldest children have been students at Shirley Heim Middle School since September two thousand and fourteen and are currently in seventh and eighth grade. Over the last two school years, my children have been assaulted or bullied to the point of needing parental intervention and follow-up with school leadership fourteen times. Now, these are really bad events, the kinds that parents don't ignore because they're so out of line they must be dealt with beyond conversations at the dinner table. My daughter has been assaulted five times. She's been hit, punched, kicked, grabbed by the foot going up the stairs with the intent to cause a trip and fall. In each of these instances, there was malicious intent. The students in question did not like my daughter and enjoyed tormenting her, and as a result, there was verbal abuse and bullying as well. In my daughter's case, she was lucky enough to have an administrator in Mr. Andrew Aversa, who was always professional and focused on reaching a reasonable resolution to particular conflicts. Each instance with my daughter was a separate instance and with different people involved. After Mr. Aversa followed up with my daughter, was left alone. The procedures in place worked for her. However, my eighth grader has been not as lucky. Last year, my son was mercilessly bullied and at one point was ambushed by a locker and roughed up. At the start of the school year, we gave notice to the school that this sort of behavior would not be tolerated this year. To date, my son has been assaulted three times in the middle school. One instance was right in front of a teacher who told the offending student that if he slapped my son in the face again, he would get a referral. Another instance was a random teacher who took it upon herself to yell in my son's ear. She was angry, his shoe had accidentally squeaked against the floor. I don't understand where her professionalism had a fatal error, but it was brought to the immediate attention of the administration, but nothing happened. This sort of behavior from the teacher is beyond acceptable, and Shirley Heim has allowed these things to continue. The final straw was yesterday. My son got into a scuffle with another student who started a shoving match. Now, since my son has been roughed up and bullied, he maintains his personal safety by shoving back a few times. There was another student who helped get control over the instigating student, and my son walked away. These events were documented on videotapes in the school. My son was defending himself, and the school refused to provide safe environments for the students. Now, to address the administration dropping the ball. Currently, my husband and I are going to have to stand up for my son's personal rights. Today, Mr. Grayson tried to say that the school rules Trump constitutional rights. What he said without saying it was that Shirley Heim administrators would rather have a child be harmed instead of keeping themselves safe, even if that means getting into a shoving match. Let that sink in for a minute. No adult in this room would allow another person to attempt, allow somebody to cause them bodily harm, so why would we allow this wrong-minded thinking in our children at Stafford County schools? My husband and I now have to fight discipline charges against my son when my son was only trying to maintain his safety. This is precious time we don't have, and something I suspect school administrators expect...
Ma'am, I need you to wrap up. I'm sorry. Do you want to give a copy of your comments?
I can give you a copy of this.
Okay. Why don't you give them to our clerk?
To, I'm sorry.
To our clerk.
To your clerk, okay.
Thank you. And sign in. Who was going to rush forward?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the school board and Dr. Benson. My name's Teresa Thompson. I'm representing the Stafford Education Association. I'd like to speak tonight for a moment regarding the agenda item for information regarding the March first Teacher Work Day for the primaries. Would like to speak against that because of the fact of Stafford County being out of snow days because with the middle, with the elementary schools being out of time, that if we use that day as a workday, that means that your students and your employees would have to make up that time, which from me looking at the calendar, that would mean the half-days at Good Friday and the half-days at Memorial Day would be the ones that would possibly disappear. I think the notice is late for your employees. Many employees have already scheduled vacation time, flights for Easter weekend. Many of your students and their parents have also made those arrangements, which your students and your parents, your parents will pull their students out of school, as was evident the Monday and Tuesday before winter break, but your employees do not have that opportunity. And so I'm asking that you find another way to accommodate the Electoral Board with the March first Teacher Work Day. If it was a case of some pre-planning and people would know ahead of time, it would be something different. Or if we want to make that a day that is a holiday, no school for teachers, for employees, for students, then we would be able to make up that time at that later date. So I'm asking that you consider your employees in your debate and in your discussion of that topic. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down. Go ahead and speak and then sign in.
Thank you.
So we keep everybody moving.
I have show and tell, sorry. I got a honey bun and a muffin. I'm here. My name is Kim Trentley, and I belong, I live at thirty-six Morning Dove Drive, and I am at the acquired district. Irene Egan is my representative, and I just want you to know that between a honey bun and a muffin, there's only twenty calories difference. I have athletes at the schools. All athletes can opt out of the muffin cart, not so much for lunch. My daughter, when she goes to lunch, she has to pick a fruit, whether she throws it in a trash can or not, doesn't matter, but she has to pick a fruit. She's an athlete. She stays at school many, many hours longer than most would if they are not athletes. So again, the difference between a muffin and a honey bun is twenty calories. I pay fifty dollars a month for my daughter's lunch money. It's taken from my credit card, snap it, you know, whatever you want, but she has to pay, she has to pick a fruit. Muffin cart is a choice. It's not like lunchtime. Lunchtime, she has to get a fruit. These are the iced teas that the cafeteria serves, okay? Sixty calories per serving. Two servings in here, hundred and twenty. So you know where I'm going with this, right? On the muffin cart, they get water, they get juices, they can opt out to buy. Also, I wanted to talk about our athletes at our schools. At our schools, at Brookpoint High School alone, I can only speak about Brookpoint High School. We have about six hundred athletes all year long. These kids stay at school from seven forty-five till after school and then continue on with lunch or without lunch, without muffin cart or without whatever. All fundraisers come from concession stands. So if you want to call the muffin cart the concession cart, go ahead and do so. But the band members also receive fun money from concession stands at the football games, which send them to Disney World, and so they can participate. We need to start looking at the amount of athletes that we have versus the amount of the obese kids that we have, okay? Nutrition starts at home, not at school. You are all here, we are all here to educate, not to make sure these kids are getting nutrition. And I'm sorry, I'm very, you know, forbless, but I really think that we really need to consider the amount of athletes we have at our schools, not just one, not just one school, Ms. Hazard. I know.
Well, I'm sorry, we can't go on, but if you have additional comments, please send them to the board.
Okay.
Because we have, it is an information item tonight.
Sure.
So we appreciate it, but thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to pass that muffin up here real quick?
If you split a honey bun in half, you're only-
I eat two honey buns. Is that like one-twenty calories?
I miss those old cinnamon rolls that they used to have in the cafeteria, like about-
Okay, bring it in.
Summertime, Mr. McCosker.
Bring it in.
We're under privilege. We need a break.
Okay, can we finish public comment?
Yeah, I think, please.
Do not want to listen to what I have to say. Good evening. My name is Jim Riuta. I live at 270 Thorny Point here in Stafford in the Acquired District. I have previously served on our Finance and Budget Advisory Committee several years, and I understand later this evening that you'll be talking about uses of our facilities. Some of the things that we've talked about in the past in order to get more community involvement, and with more community involvement, we have a greater opportunity to ask for more dollars in our schools. We need to have, we need to have more community participation. If you read some of your, I briefly was able to read some of the literature that you provided in the agenda, and it talked about community assets. Indeed, the schools are one of Stafford's greatest community assets. We should have equal access to these assets. The participation by our citizenry, from what I understand, just recently came to my attention, that Boy Scouts to use the facility more than once are charged four hundred dollars to be able to use a school. That hasn't happened at my school. I work really well with Stafford Elementary School, so Ms. Mary Foreman isn't here, but I'd like to say that she does a great job with the community. But it has come to my attention that some of these scouts have had to pay four hundred dollars. These are the same scouts that perform Eagle Projects that actually give back to the schools directly, so they spend their time volunteering and actually provide us with these projects to better the schools, and yet we turn around and then charge them to use the school. I'm not sure that's fair. We heard earlier about civic organizations, how they're not able to use the schools. That confounds me where, you know, I've heard the age-old attic that, well, we can't support a Republican, we can't support a Democrat, we need to remain neutral, but yet we allow churches. Do we say that we support a Catholic church if we allow Catholics to use a church? Do we say that we support Judaism because we allow a Hebrew church to use the facilities? We don't make that recommendation, nor do we endorse any religion, but yet churches can use the facilities. So I'm not sure why a political organization wouldn't also be able to use the facilities. By using them, we are not necessarily endorsing. And again, part of this is to bring greater awareness and allow our citizens, you know, we talked about the track earlier I heard at Stafford, we should be allowing our citizens to be able to use these facilities, so we'll get more participation and we'll be able to bring those dollars back to the schools. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board for public comment? If not, I will close public comment. Mr.-
Hi.
Okay.
We're under privilege, a five-minute break. Madam Chair.
Okay, a five-minute break, and we will be back in five minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Do you have it called up?
Yes.
Okay.
We will reconvene the Stafford County School Board. We will begin with item, Agenda Item 7.01, Student Discipline Matters. Ms. Egan will read the Student Discipline Report of the December seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen School Board Committee.
On December seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, a committee of the board met to consider two student disciplinary matters. The committee expelled student A, and on Case B expelled student B and authorized student B to attend the regional alternative education program.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Egan. Then we will move on to 7.02, I know whoever you are, Board Member Comments. I will start with Mr. Hirons.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mans recognized these folks a little earlier, and he really said everything that could be said, or said it better than I'm probably going to say it, but I did want to take a couple moments here, recognize some of the students in our audience tonight. I'm not asking them to be recognized for their accomplishment just yet, but rather to highlight what they do and the importance of STEM education that they're taking advantage of. The robotics team from Stafford High School is with us tonight, and I believe, you guys didn't bring a robot with you, did you? We had talked about maybe doing a little demonstration, so we'll save that for when we're here for the award. The team's made up of Mrs. Luddington, our science teacher at SHS. After I read the names, we will applaud. Diamond Chick, Emerald Chick, Amber DeVoe, and I apologize if I'm messing up anybody's name. William Hovey, Fatuma Hussein, Austin Lane, who is one of the founding members of the team. I believe you founded it as a freshman, and he's now a senior. Toby Lane, William Patterson, John Quinn, Angela Tugata, Ashton Williams, Amy Winton, Andrew White, Jacob Wright, Anthony Volo, Robo Mentor, Mr. Adams.
Robo Mentor.
Robo Dad Mentors, Mr. DeVoe, Mr. Lane, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Wright. And I'm going to get to a special shout-out a little bit later here. A lot of our schools do have robotics team, but they seem to come and go. In one year, they'll have them, they'll go a few years without having them, but they all seem to support each other within the STEM education program we have and curriculum we have throughout Stafford County. I believe the team from Stafford High School has benefited from North Stafford's former team, and they picked up some of the equipment that the team from North Stafford used to have, and they've been able to take advantage of that and use that within their competition. What's interesting, Dr. White, is North Stafford has a STAT program, as Stafford, as you know, has been removed currently. The robotics teams show off our STEM education and the importance of STEM education, not only here in Stafford County, but throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country. These robotics competitions are growing competitions. There's actually efforts within the VHSL to make robotics a recognized competition. Hopefully, that'll occur at some point, and interest, participation, and funding will come along with that, and we'll have more of our students being able to participate in this great opportunity. I wanted to highlight, as a part of the STEM education discussion, an event that's happening in Stafford County on Saturday, April twenty-third, at Stafford Regional Airport. The Stafford Science and Engineering Festival will be held on April twenty-third at eleven a.m. to four p.m. It's sponsored by Engineering for Kids, and it's going to provide kids across the region exposure to things like robotics and many other STEM education opportunities. For more information, they do have a website, www.staffordsciencefest.com. The event is in partnership with Stafford Economic Development Department, along with several local companies providing sponsorship. Speaking of local companies, I did want to give a shout-out to one of our local companies, McQ, Inc. They are located off of Route One in the Falmouth District here in Stafford. They have provided sponsorship for the team from Stafford, the Stafford Robotics Team. They've helped them, I believe, with equipment and coursework, if I'm not mistaken, and they've really been able to help the team achieve their goals. Like I said, I didn't want to ask that they be recognized for their accomplishments just yet because they're not finished. They did recently place second in a regional competition. As I just learned, and we should really highlight this paper, are you listening? They, one of the teams that Mr. Mans didn't mention was still, was sitting and packing up their stuff while our folks, our students were still competing, was Thomas Jefferson High School in Fairfax County. If you don't know Thomas Jefferson High School, it's the probably most elite STEM-based education magnet school in Northern Virginia. It's an incredible accomplishment that our students were still competing while they were packing up their gear and heading home, so job well done. We will have you back down here in front of us when you guys come back as state champions. So congratulations to all you do. And with that, my only other comments was, and I'm going to ask Ms. Fallon, and I think she's going to follow up with some information about a great visit we had today with Congressman Whitman at Stafford High School.
Ms. Fallon.
All right. I'm going to try to take less time than Scott, but I have a lot of things. There's a lot of things that have happened since I saw you all last. I got to go on a bus ride, which was awesome. It was very, very cold. They made me come on the coldest day they could find, but I had a, I really enjoyed getting out there and doing that. I want to ask what it is that Ms. Neely bribed those people with to come and talk about C-5W because I was excited after listening to them, and I know I'm just joking with you, but I had said to you in the past that that's, I'm really excited about that, so thank you for doing that, and your presentation was awesome. Quick, all the information, it was great. I got to go to HH Pool with Dr. Benson last week, and that was really exciting. We had a lot of fun, or I at least had a lot of fun. We got to visit an autism classroom, and we got to learn about monster trucks and Minecraft, and it sort of plays into that C-5W where we were really learning these things as we were doing a language arts lesson, so that was great fun. As Scott was saying, we got to visit with Congressman Whitman today. He came out, and we got to show him around Stafford High School, so that was really exciting. It does not get old going down there and seeing all the cool new things, and every time we, I go in there, this is the second time now, and it's been about a month, things are improving and getting done as we go along, and listening to the kids, we had the opportunity today with the congressman there, they sent three kids from the newspaper to take some pictures and interview, and we got a chance to talk to them as we were going around, too. They were excited, and they were all seniors, and they were all really excited to be able to say that they got one year in the high school. The windows, they talked a lot about the windows, everybody likes the windows, but it was just really great. It was great to be able to have the congressman. He seemed to really enjoy the opportunity to walk around and meet the teachers, and he really, like I said, had a good time. I will say that he's got a wife who is a teacher, so he's a little partial to teachers, but he really took the time to listen and see, and I think that our muffin cart people will be happy to hear that we also talked to him about that, and he is not wanting to cut their muffin carts either, so that's, that's it.
Ms. Gibby?
No comments this evening.
Mr. McCosker?
Yeah. Very quickly. Budget time of the year, budget process, we had a meeting before this. You know, we're focusing on class size reduction. I'm focusing on paraprofessional and bus driver pay outside the class size reduction. We have the staff doing a lot of good work. We're going to come back with a paraprofessional analysis. Ferry Farm has already done a great one, and we'll do the same thing for bus driver analysis, and then we'll try to get some money. You know, the percentage sometimes that we discussed, all of us, and I think we all agree that sometimes when you get a one percent, a two percent raise, then you apply it to a bus driver, paraprofessional pay, you know, the thirty-eight cents after taxes just doesn't, isn't a real bump, you know? So we're going to look at that, and that's in our priorities. You know, Dave, let's see if we can't, I know Scott's already mentioned it a few times, Hirons, but let's talk about STAT again, okay? Plan to support the track renewal. Let's face it, that six lanes, you can't have them meet, right? Besides being tore up from this, that, and the other thing, right? So let's get busy with that tonight and make it happen. Use your support on that. And I support the most lenient interpretation of the snack cart. You know, I'll have to admit, my wife's on the snack cart at Stafford High School. She's pushing it, so I'm going to catch some serious pain and suffering.
Conflict of interest.
Yeah, it's a little conflict of interest, but there you have it, I'm still going to vote, you know what I mean? So, okay, that's it.
Did you want to include the bus monitors with the bus driver?
Drivers and monitors, thank you.
Ms. Healy.
Thank you. I just have two things, well, one may have subparts. One has to do with the policies. We had a speaker tonight talking about the use of the schools, and that policy was actually, you know, set up many years ago, and I think it's time to review that. Also, the comment about the scouts, we got an email from an Eagle Scout who had done extensive work at one of our schools, and because the troop had already used the school once during the year, if this scout wanted to have his Eagle Project Celebration Award Ceremony, he would have to pay, or the troop would have to pay. And this is after the particular scout did many, many thousands of dollars' worth of work to benefit the school. So I think that policy of the use of the schools and then the political action, because the original intent of the policy, you know, limiting political activity, was really just to protect people from being, yeah, attacked during campaign time, or, you know, having an influence that other students may not want. It certainly was, to my recollection, Mrs. Gibby, I think you were here when that, you know, was first introduced, was not intended to cut out the use. So I would like to request that we bring that policy up for review, if it's two policies, the use of school and the political purpose, but, you know, these reviews always take time, and now we really are inundated, and the budget has to be number one. So I would suggest that for the immediate future, until we have a chance to review and make changes to that policy, because we have to have certain announcements, and it takes, you know, it doesn't take a while, Mr. Nelson, to make a change in a policy.
It's going to be once it comes.
Yeah, well, once it comes. I'd suggest that we have an open invitation for someone that would like an exception to the policy to be able to bring that to the board, because otherwise, you know, we may be precluded for months for allowing something to happen there. The second policy that I, and this is a subpart, second policy that I think needs to be reviewed, probably too late for this year because we've already used our inclement weather days, but is the inclement weather policy. I know Ms. Fallon raised some questions at the special call meeting we had about why can't we make these announcements earlier, and I think that, to a certain extent, the superintendent's hands are tied, you know, by the way that policy is written, that they're going to make the decision, you know, that morning, when you wake up and you know we're not going to be in school for a while. I mean, I predicted we'd be out all week, and I was right on that one. But anyway, I think that policy needs to be reviewed as well, although at this point, I don't think there's an urgency, as long as we do it before, you know, the end of the summer. Finally, I have, my second item is, has to do with clerical administrative support in the elementary schools. And we've talked about this starting last November with the staffing standards and recognize that now that we have really large schools, and one, I'm not sure it's the distinction to be number one in, but one of our schools now has, since Mrs. listening she gave us, by the time these students get registered, they're going to have nine hundred students. So that's fifty percent more than a number of our other elementary schools. I'm not suggesting taking any staffing away from our smaller schools, but in the case of the student, the school that has nine hundred students, and we have another student, another with, according to the list, eight hundred and forty-five, but I think they're probably up to around eight fifty now, I'd ask the board to consider allowing Dr. Benson to let them hire an hourly assistant, I'm not sure what the title is, but basically a clerical person for the office for the remainder of this year. It would be temporary, it would not be extended unless the school board, when we're looking at these staffing standards, makes some change. And there is a precedent for that. Years ago, when Rodney Thompson was up to about twelve fifty, and Conway was way up there before the redistricting- the redistricting, we did something very similar. It was a temporary, you know, additional clerical to meet the needs, you know, for that year. And with all the screening and security that we have now in the schools, which is a wonderful thing, but it places a lot of extra work on the staff in the office, you know, what they do with the screening, the IDs, and the letting people in the door, and, you know, with parents and so many people coming. So, I would request for those two particular schools that we allow them that extra administrative, and this would be an hourly staffing. And Ms. Hazard, did you get any figures on what that cost would be?
I did not.
I did not, but let's get to my comments and then I'll follow up.
Okay, all right. I don't think it's going to be a lot in the picture of our entire budget, and I can't believe there wouldn't be enough funding there for that.
Were you suggesting to add that as an agenda item for this evening?
Well, I don't know. Do we have to vote on it, or I don't know. I think the board just said do it, and we've kind of done that with the other, you know, professional and paraprofessional positions, but, you know, we can add it if we want. I don't know, Ms. Hazard, if you think we need to do that. If we need to do that, then I would request that it be added to the agenda. If not necessary, I'd just say if anyone has a problem, you know, let us know, and I think Ms. Hazard has some comments on it as well. Thank you.
Ms. Egan, do you want to go?
I just have a few announcements. Stafford Elementary is going to hold their annual spaghetti dinner on Thursday, February 18th. If you've never been, you don't know what you're missing. This coincides with their regular science fair. Moncur's clothing sale is February 27th. Again, if you've never been, you don't know what you're missing. Special shout out to Stafford Middle School's boys basketball team. They are the 2016 county champions. So, congratulations, boys. We're all very proud of you. Brook Point is holding their IB Information Night this Thursday, the 11th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. So, anybody wanting to learn about the program, about individual IB classes, you're welcome to come on out. NJROTC is holding their off-site inspection tomorrow morning, and I invite all my fellow board members, if you're interested in seeing the ceremony. It's kind of cool. Come on out. I believe it starts at 8 o'clock in the morning. Mrs. Ryanbolt, who's still involved with the Booster Club, is going to be joining me there tomorrow. And lastly, on a not-so-positive note, I've been kind of disturbed lately about what I've been seeing on bus routes lately, more notably Courthouse Road in between Andrew Chapel and Stafford Elementary School, cars flying through 25 mile an hour, school zone flashing lights, and I've even seen some people flying through stopped school buses with elementary students getting on and getting off the school buses. Bus drivers are blowing on their horns. I'm blowing on my horn trying to get people's attention, and they're oblivious. So, I don't know if they're that interested in getting to work on time and don't really care about the safety of our kids, but right now, I'm asking Dr. Benson and staff to put a communication out to the sheriff's office. We need to start seeing some more patrols around school starting hours and school ending hours because people are not paying attention to what's going on around them. I'd like to see this done before somebody gets hurt. So, thank you.
Thank you. I would echo that. I don't think it's an isolated incident in your part of the county, is what I will say. I would just want to hit, going into the schools and talking about the budget, I went with Supervisor Snellings to Hartwood Elementary, go every year. Ms. Healy and I went to Margaret Brent, I'm going to Rocky Run soon. It's such a great way for us to go out there and see what the day-to-day operations of our schools look like on a, you know, just a random day. Many board members have mentioned about policy and needing to revise our policies. I think our policy manual needs a complete overhaul. That is not something that is new for any board members who know me. I certainly hope that as a board, we will examine that in our work session as we look at our workload and how we will get that done and in the best manner. Certainly, I hope that we will look towards governance or policy committees so that we can get these things done, and we don't always have to be in a reactive mode. I think we need to be forward-thinking. In that light, several things have come up. I hope you all saw the invitation from Ms. Cavatayo, I think I said it correctly, Rita, to visit. I hope you all take advantage of all the great orchestra and band, and I believe next weekend is chorus, if anybody knows, to see our all-county students. They are just amazing. There's so much talent in our, did I get it right? If I got it wrong, I know some musical stuff's coming up. There's just so much going on in our county. As Ms. Healy noted, getting in the front office of a school with 900 kids was an eye-opening experience, that just getting people in and out of the doors takes five to 10 minutes to just check everybody and make sure our kids are safe. I would reiterate Ms. Healy's request that we use some of the funds from this year's funding to fund that. I would ask Dr. Benson, if you have, we can talk about it in your comments, but I just think going forward, we have to help our students there because it's not just the administrative side. That's also the front person for our parents as well to get information. With that, though, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Mr. Nelson? A motion, a second, and action, could we do that with that additional staffing? So, I'm going to defer back to the chair.
We need a motion? We can get a question or a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to hire hourly clerical support, one person at the school, Margaret Brent, which has 900 students, and the other would be Rocky Run, which has between...
857.
Oh, okay. Well, it's now, it's over 850. And if it's such time and another school gets, you know, higher, then we'll bring that back. But that would be only from as soon as they could be brought on board until the end of the school year.
Second.
We have a motion on the table. Any discussion?
I did have a couple of questions. I know we don't have a dollar figure involved. I can't imagine that it would be prohibitively expensive, so I'm going to assume that that isn't, it certainly isn't a concern for this board member. I do have a concern for other schools that may be approaching those high levels as well, or other schools that have a lot of special needs students, a lot of ESL-type students that may need that kind of support. I'd like to amend the motion to give the superintendent some leeway in determining where the clerical needs might be in our highly populated elementary schools. If we could add some language like that, would that be, would that work for the rest of the board members?
I don't have any problem with that. What I had suggested was that in the event that the schools, you know, increase, or I think your point is well-taken, that it's not necessarily the number of students, but the demands on the front office staff, that that would be brought to the board's attention. Perhaps we could just...
We have several schools with high ESL, and when those parents visit the schools, it takes a great deal amount of time and staff to work with those students.
So, my only question is, do we want to authorize the superintendent to use his discretion to add this staffing where he thinks there's need, or to bring it back to the board to approve? Either one would be okay with me. We're only talking about four months.
I feel like it's sort of arbitrary, honestly. I mean, I'm looking through the numbers at our schools, and we have a few that have lower enrollment, but we have a lot of schools that are between, you know, 750 and 900, and I think that you'd be hard-pressed to have any school not be able to justify needing the additional support. So, I think that there needs to be some kind of guideline because then it just looks like Dr. Benson likes Principal A better than Principal B. And I don't want to be on the other end of that phone call when my principal calls up and says, "Well, they have the same number of students we do. Why did they get the support and we didn't?"
Which is a good point, and that's why I suggested that we have the superintendent bring it back to us.
I agree.
If he sees the need arise. I don't think there's going to be any, you know, problem with the board considering it, and we could even take action, you know, when it's brought to our attention.
Is this going to be authority?
Well, I think Ms. Fallon's saying that she would prefer it to be brought back to the board if superintendent...
Or that there were more definite guidelines as to where you're going to cut that off, how you're going to decide. Because as I'm looking at it, we have, like I said, a lot of schools that are over 750, but not at 900. So, where do you, then we have a couple who are at 500.
But they might already be staffed, though. If it's a 950 school, they're already staffed to accommodate them.
No, I'm just talking about elementary schools right now because that was, their points were elementary schools that reached 900 students.
See, all our elementaries have the exact number of support staff in the office, whether they have 500 and some students or 900 students.
Or they have 900 students.
And in this particular instance, the two that I had identified was a school with 850 and a school with 900.
There is a problem.
You know, it may be that there's a need somewhere else, and I think Mrs. Kidby's point, that it's not necessarily the number of students.
Right.
There might be other factors. So, if we just ask Dr. Benson to bring it to us, and then we can decide on the case by case. Yeah, but these are all good points that we need to think about when we work on that staffing standard, which we'll be doing as part of the budget process. So, right now, all, you know, all we're looking at is two clerical supports, you know, one at each school hourly from now until the end of the year. That's all we're looking, or until they can get hired. I don't know how quickly that will, might take a while.
I want to make sure that I understand what the motion is, and is the motion that we authorize Dr. Benson to put forth a recommendation for the board to consider at our next meeting?
No, well, the, what I intended the motion to be, and it is getting late, but let me try to restate the motion. The motion would be to authorize the superintendent to hire one clerical support staff for Margaret Brent, one clerical support staff for Rocky Run, hourly personnel from as soon as they can be brought on through the end of this year. And then, secondly...
School year.
Yeah, it's the end of the school year, which may be a little later if we have more inclement weather. The second part would be to ask the superintendent to bring to the board any recommendation that he deems necessary or relevant to add additional support staff in any other school, whether it be, it could be elementary, middle, you know, or high.
I hear that as two motions. The first motion is how I heard it. Or we can do it as one.
Well, the second one doesn't do anything. It just says, "Bring us a recommendation." We're not spending any money or doing anything like that. It just says that we want to know, and then we will make the decision on a case-by-case basis.
I would second.
Is that clear?
Second, is there understanding among the board members?
You guys lost me after, and another thing.
All right.
Maybe have the clerk read the motion.
Is that clear, Mrs. Kidby?
I got it. I mean, I understand what we need, but it looks like it doesn't sound like it's polished up the stomach.
I agree. I just, I'm still not particularly comfortable with it.
I was good with the first one when we said, "Hey, let's make a motion for elementary school at over 800 or over 850." Cut it right there. That's the first phase of this operation, and then we'll take care of those, and then we'll, if we need to roll this further, we'll do that. That's what I thought.
Do I hear, do I hear that as a substitute?
I'm good with that, then. Not...
Do I hear that as a substitute, that it's over 800? Is that what you wanted instead?
No, he said 850.
850.
Well, I said the two elementary schools based on their population as of today.
Right.
They're not going down. In fact, they're both higher than this list, which is maybe within a few days.
All right, we need to move on. Is there, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Please restate the motion. I'm not clear on the motion. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Okay. Third time's a charm.
The motion would be to authorize the superintendent to hire an hourly clerical support staff as soon as possible through the end of this school year for Margaret Brent, which has a current population of approximately 900, and for Rocky Run, which has a current population, student population of approximately 850 students.
No, but they're at 845 on the paper. So, if 850 is our number, then...
What are they now, Holly?
857.
They're at 857. This paper was probably done a day or two ago.
Then stay at 840.
That's why I'm just saying Margaret Brent and Rocky Run.
Yes.
If that's excessive, that's simple. Then we don't have any magic number.
Please let us know. I'm good with that.
Okay.
I have a second on that one.
Is that, is that clear, Mrs. Kidby?
Is that good?
Got it.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries. Thank you very...
No, no, you've got to pull the board. Do you have a nay?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pull the board, Ms. Ewing. Sorry.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Fallon?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. Hironz?
Yes.
Ms. Kidby?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yeah.
Motion passes by a vote of six to one.
Thank you very much.
That's no outside. Dr. Benson? Okay, thank you all.
Dr. Benson?
No comment.
No comment. Okay.
Move on.
All right. May we move on to the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent items, 901 and 902, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to action items. Oops, sorry. Action item 10.01, appoint members to the Finance and Budget Standing Committee. This is for, if I misstate, Mr. Hironz, make sure that I state, to reaffirm that most, both Mr. Hironz and myself last July will have served our requisite, or the maximum of two years.
We were both appointed on, in the January meeting of 2014. The current bylaws of the Fab and the proposed bylaws in the next agenda item limit a 24-month time of service on the Fab. Our 24-month would have been June of, I mean, I'm sorry, January, this last month.
Right.
And what we're seeking is approval to extend to July, which the bylaws call for when, of when the appointment of members is supposed to occur.
So, do I have...
I move for approval, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to 10.02, speaking about the same thing, the revised bylaws of the Finance and Budget Committee. As you all may recall, when it was up for information, we made a modification to that document, which you have seen several times before. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, I had a question about item three under the audit responsibilities. It talks about the internal auditor, and I wasn't, I don't recall us approving that. We discussed it.
No, we haven't. I think we talked about this at the last Fab meeting of whether or not to leave that in there or strike it. However, I think the conclusion was, let's leave it in there. If it's in there without an internal auditor, no harm, no foul. It sets it up if we do decide at a future date to go the route of an internal auditor.
Then could we change that to say, in the event an internal auditor, you know, is retained by the school board or is hired by the school board, the auditor reports? I think it's a little confusing because upon reading this, I would have the impression that there is an internal auditor, and that confused me when I reviewed these bylaws.
The board discussion on that clarification or edit? Is there consensus with that?
As long as Roberta wrote it in language that's understandable.
Ms. Kidby, I believe you made the motion so as amended?
Yes, as amended, per Ms. Healy.
Whoever was the second? Do you concur to the amendment?
Irene was.
I think it was Irene.
Okay.
Irene beat me.
All those in favor of the motion, of the approval as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on. Sorry. The next one, 10.03, approve the program of middle school's course catalog. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve 10.03.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, section, number ten point oh four, approve a landscaping buffer and easement between Stafford County and Tricord, related to the Liberty Knolls West subdivision.
I move for approval for discussion purposes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Discussion. Ms. Kidby, would you like to start, or it's up to you?
This particular agenda item has been, the agreement has been modified somewhat. At the time that the modifications were made, Ms. Healy was not available to take a look at some specific language in relation to the modification, and she does have some minor adjustments that she thinks might be appropriate in terms of the legal language that pertain to the easement specifically. So what we'd like to do is make those adjustments, if staff could get with Ms. Healy and/or myself, so that we, we can bring forward those recommendations. They're minor in, and they don't change the essence of the agreement. They're just some housekeeping things that we think are appropriate in order to protect the interest of both Tricord and Stafford County public schools.
So my hearing for, it would come for action at the next scheduled meeting on the twenty-sixth?
Yes, and Madam Chairman, I did not see this agreement or the easement until the agenda was posted on Friday. I was out of town when there was the walkthrough, but Mrs. Kidby said she was fine with where the easement is, so I, I don't have any problem with that, as long as she's agreeable. The only substantive change I have here, I think, would be with respect to the payment of the funds, and, and that would be that it all be paid at once, and we not have to wait until the fiftieth occupancy permit was issued to, to accept all the funds. But the rest of it is, has to do with protecting the school board interests. I'm not looking out for the other party, I'm just looking out for the school board. And I've discussed these with Mrs. Kidby, and, you know, we can work on this together.
I appreciate.
Yeah, and I recommend that we, we bring it forth for action at the next, the next meeting.
Okay, so we will revisit item ten point oh five at our next meeting on the twenty-sixth. So let's move on to ten point oh six, which is to approve the award of a professional service contract using VSPA funds.
Can we take on ten oh five?
Did I miss, oh, sorry, you're right, I was on ten point oh five, excuse me. Approve at the reprogramming, reprogramming of VPSA, sorry, I'll get it out, project funds and funding strategy for the repair of the track project at Stafford High School, which we have discussed tonight. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve ten top of oh five.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded for approval. I would ask the board, we are open for discussion.
I just, I, I do want to highlight, because there was discussion, and I was glad we were able to get away from not having to use Hampton Oaks potential funding, but we did go a route where we are taking some money from the Stafford High School rebuild contingency fund. Both Mr. McOscar and I, you know, have a lot of concern about that, because that contingency fund was to hope to pay for a few other things. We hope we get over that, and we can recoup that funding or those projects that we want to do in some other methods. Through discussion, we think the funding method, funding strategy here that we developed is probably the best. We're also taking some money out of the FY16 operating budget savings, which isn't the, necessarily always the ideal use of, of surplus funds, basically, or end-of-year funds. But as it tested to by the coach and runners of Stafford High School, and former runners, that track is in severe near, need of repair, so I appreciate your support on this, and look forward to Stafford relays, is that what they were called?
Yeah, the relays.
We're going to get them happening real soon. I'll be out there, just watching, not running.
And just to reiterate, yeah, no, the costing, I don't see any flaw with the costing plan. I think we can recoup, you know, the contingency fund for the third practice field was always the issue at Stafford High School. We do have a large high school, and, you know, we're one of, I think there's two, there's two schools without three practice fields, I think it's north of us, right? So that's, that was always my concern. I don't have any concerns with the budget way ahead that Mr. Hirons presented, and it is also adding those two lanes from six to eight, which is, that will give the relay, and that will be able to bring those meets down. And so I've, I hope that that supports not only the costing of this, but moving it forward and to get it going. Thanks.
Ms. Kidby?
Madam Chair, just real quick, I'm going to support this item as well, coming from a family of runners. In fact, Pete, I think you ran with Robbie. I think one of the, the young men that spoke, you went to BMI, right? Yeah, I think you ran the same year as my son, Robbie Kidby, at North Stafford High School. Yeah, I thought so. I, I, when there's a safety issue on those tracks, it's, it's very problematic, and that's just the end of discussion.
Ms. Healy?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to support this, and I appreciate the creativity that was used to come up with this funding and not take it away from another school's project. But I would just like to, to state for the record, that when Stafford High School rebuild was under consideration by the board, this was one of the areas. Now, neither Mr. Hirons nor Mr. McOscar was on the board at that time, but the board specifically talked about replacing this track, and that would, and adding it, making the upgrades, and it would have all been part of the Stafford rebuild project. But the choice at that time was not to do it, to do it along the, the general course of business. So it was a discussion, and, and that was really, I know, I would, I followed the lead in most cases of the representatives who had the students there. So it's not like this has been ignored all the time, but there were, there were representatives who felt that there were other needs that were more important than the track. Surely, it clearly needs to be done now, the repairs have to be done, and it's, it's fortunate that we're able to come up with the funding so that we can enlarge the track. But it's, it's something that has been known for, for a number of years, just like the, the auto body. That was, you know, whatever.
I too, I too will be supporting this motion. I would like to thank the members of the, of the Fab who worked on trying to come up with a way to, to do this. I think that it's great to be able to have that opportunity to vet it and come up with ideas. I think that was a great way. A question that I asked throughout this process, which still has of concern, this does not need to be answered tonight, I am still very curious why the Stafford track was, of the five tracks that were on there, it was put last if it was in this deplorable condition. It does not sound like it is a brand-new issue, and I just am somewhat concerned on our cyclical replacement, if we really missed that this track was in that need of repair. I will be supporting the motion. I'm glad that we will be able to get this track up and running. So without any, oh, true. I didn't even think about that. Most people know I don't run. So do I, we have the motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to information items. First one, eleven point oh one.
No, we didn't move ten point oh.
Oh my gosh, how did I do that? I'm sorry. I'm trying to go through these. Ten point oh six, how did I miss this? Approve the award of a professional service contract in the amount of two million one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-four using VPSA funds to Grimmon Parker Architects for the design and construction, and construction administration services for the rebuild of Moncur Elementary School.
I just want to jump in on this and say that when the superintendent goes to visit Moncur, you should all come see the school and see why we need to make sure we do this and are on time with this, and don't have issues like we did at Stafford High School, because it is going to cost us a ton of money to try to put Band-Aids on to Moncur to fix it. We are getting to the point where we're out of compliance on things, and, like I said, we've just been putting Band-Aids on there for a couple of years, waiting for the rebuild. And I'd like to remind you that the redistricting hinges on it. And I'd like to move to approve this.
So I have, I have a primary motion?
Don't we have to move it to action? It's on information.
No, it's not. I jumped to information. I jumped to information.
Yeah, no, it's on action.
It's on action. It's ten point oh six. I jumped to information for eleven. I had my cursor on the wrong place.
I'll second it.
Okay, there is a second. Any further discussion on this agenda item?
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
The, the sequence here is a little bit of a challenge for us. This was one of the items that the supervisors discussed at their retreat this past weekend, and we have a capital improvement program that currently is out of, out of balance. We do need to start this work, and, and part of that reason is, is that we've got to get these teams together to begin the design process. We need our architects, architects to lead that work. We may need to make some changes along the way, based upon funds that are available, or how we decide to restructure funds to support the project. We've talked about some different ways that we might get some balance in our CIP by allocating some cash, working with our colleagues across the street, the supervisors, to determine how to balance the CIP, because we have some responsibility to do that. It's something that I think we need to do together. But I just, I want the board to understand that it really needs to be a fluid situation as we go through the next couple of weeks, and the CIP gets firmed up, and we figure out exactly what dollars we're going to have to, to put into the project. The contract is worded in such a way that if there were any reduction in the scope of the design, there would be a representative reduction in the design fees. That would not be at the top of our list. We just need to know that we have the flexibility to do that moving, moving forward.
So do we need to have this approved tonight? Because you feel we need to get it started? We just need the fluidity in the?
We do, and that's, and that's the thing, is that, is I wish we were in a different place with the CIP and our conversations with supervisors, but we, we have got to get the teams going to do, to work on the design. In the next couple of weeks, I anticipate that will, those things will come to closure, and if we need to make adjustments in the scope of what we're doing in the design, we'll be in a position to do that. Correct, Mr. Haran? Yes.
And if I could just add one additional, I have had conversations, at least with Chairman Thomas and others, they are supportive of Moncur and possibly not moving it. Of course, you know, we're still fluid, but there seems to be a real willingness for us all to work together to get to the best solution. So I do feel comfortable approving this tonight, under those circumstances and the current relationship we have with our counterparts across the street.
Agreed.
Madam Chair, if I may, it is a little disconcerting to me to, to approve a architectural contract, but we're not quite sure of the funding stream and the scope of the project. But I appreciate Dr. Benson's willingness to, to share that there's flexibility within this contract, so that if we need to change that scope, we'll be able to do that. Thank you for sharing that.
Dr. Benson, is that change going to be without cost to the school system? If we need to change the scope of the contract?
My understanding is it would be with a reduction in cost in the contract that's awarded, so that we would reduce the scope of design, which would be a reduction in our obligation to the architects. Correct, Mr. Haran?
Wouldn't that depend on when we change it?
Correct.
I mean.
Right, and, well, the, the issue is that we're.
I just want to make sure we're not going to have to pay any more money.
No, it would be a reduction. It would, it would be a reduction.
They're taking this up on Tuesday, aren't they, at their next meeting?
That is my understanding, and Mr. Romanello has asked for myself and Mr. Haran to, to come and provide any additional information that the supervisors might want.
Good.
Hearing all that, and a motion, and a, and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved unanimously. Now moving on, finally.
No, you have the code.
I'm okay with that one. The code, that doesn't, anything, no.
We usually have that at the end for that.
Eleven point oh one?
No, we didn't.
No, we're going to move on to, that's just a code structure. So eleven point oh one, discuss March first, 2016, as a teacher workday due to presidential primary. I would, let's see. I believe you all, attached to this agenda item is the Stafford registrar's request. You will also see, I believe, at your table, or at your, your spot, there is a school calendar for your reference, should, should you need that, and I believe some additional information regarding other counties. Dr. Benson, I don't know if there's any comments you would have to start, or if not, that's okay? I just want to make sure I gave you that up on eleven point oh one.
I, I, I'll wait till here a little bit about where the board is thinking we might go.
Madam Chair, if we want to start discussion, I brought this also to the attention of staff back in January, I think, when Fairfax was going through some thoughts and ideas about changing their calendar for this to accommodate it, because my concern was fairly local, but I think there are probably concerns at many schools that are used for voter, voting locations. But Stafford High School, if we have, to begin with, March one is the, is the presidential primary here in Virginia, and as everyone knows, there are more candidates this year than there have been in years past. Virginia has taken part in Super Tuesday this year, which means there's going to be a, a very high visibility of, of it being an election day. Predictions are that turnout is going to be higher for this presidential primary than, than years past, or at any point. And that causes me a lot of concern, specifically about Stafford High School, because Stafford High School is a voting precinct, I believe of the Hartwood District, if I'm not mistaken. And Stafford is already difficult to navigate with the construction that's going on, for parents dropping off students, for buses, for students getting in there, staff getting in there in the morning. There's very limited parking. They have a few spaces, I think about four spaces that they can utilize for, you know, they can section off as voter spaces. If turnout is where it is, there's potentially, and most likely going to be more than four voters at, at several points throughout the day, and those people are just going to be driving around, trying to find, running into construction sites and everything else. Stafford High School is just not a good location right now. I asked if there was an opportunity to, to have that precinct voting location be located someplace else. The registrar doesn't seem to be too interested or excited about that, and obviously with the, also with the higher predicted turnout, I think many of our schools that service voter locations are going to struggle with accommodating voters, as well as trying to conduct school during the day. I do appreciate the SEA, was there a formal position by the SEA, if not, for members coming out and speaking? It's, it's most certainly understandable, and I, I, you know, I, I take your comments very deeply, and I understand, and it's such a struggle for me to, to, to say. I think it's still a good idea to not have school on March first, or at a minimum, try to delay school, a two-hour delay type of thing, so at least during the rush hour in the morning, folks aren't competing for spaces, or for, for space on Enon Road, specifically at Stafford High School. So that, that's where I am with it. I would like to find a way, if there's any way, and I understand there's a large majority of jurisdictions throughout the Commonwealth, or at least in metropolitan areas, that are adjusting their calendars and making that a, a teacher workday, or a day off, whatever it might be. I know it's, it's, it's the longest shot you can ask for, but if we can send a letter to the State Board of Elections, the Department of Education, the General Assembly, whomever, to relieve counties of having to make up March first specifically, you know, maybe it's the best we can ask for. I'm sure that letter will find its way in the circular file, but we got to give it a try if we do go that route.
Madam Chair? The, what gives me the most heartburn about all this is, we're less than a month away from March first, and we just got this letter from the registrar's office.
On the eighth.
Last week? When?
The eighth, it's dated February eighth.
Okay, so that's, they knew that the primary was coming. We still have two full months of winter time to get through.
Twenty-ninth, January twenty-ninth.
We, we still have two months of, of potential snow that we have to get through. We just had seven snow days. I, I can't imagine, the teachers were all discombobulated, our kids were out of school and driving me nuts for seven days. They need to be in school learning. We are not, as much as we want to be considered community centers, we're educational facilities where we need to be teaching our kids. They need to be in school. And I'm sorry, there's no way that I'm going to support this, because we don't have the time. We don't, that's all I'm going to say. We don't have the time, and it was poor planning, and I'm not going to be voting for this.
I agree with you, and I would just like to add that I understand that it could be a safety issue, and if you have anything to speak to that about, I know that, Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have anything to speak on as far as safety? Because that is the only way that I could see myself supporting this as it is now. And then I would only support it as a day off, not a future workday.
Ms. Fallon, let me just see what, are there any other comments first before Mr. Fitzgerald gives maybe a fuller-
Okay.
If that's, okay. Ms. Healy.
I received a few emails today and I asked Ms., um-
Here. Super Clerk.
Ms., Ms., yeah, Super Clerk, Super Clerk ex-marine or current marine to share them. And I, I know she, she does everything so quickly, no sooner do I push the button than she's already done that. But I, I think the, you know, the, the people who wrote were, were both teachers and parents and they both raised concerns with this. And the primary one is, is, has been articulated that the, the students need to be in school, that they've already missed, you know, all this school and also that this would place a hardship particularly on elementary school parents who have to make daycare arrangements. You know, they've already had to deal with the seven days and now to have a day off. And, and it was also pointed out, if you give kids off on Tuesday, a lot of them aren't going to come on Monday, so then they're going to, you know, miss more time. So I, I would not support making it a non-school day. However, I think that we could possibly have some arrangement with the Sheriff's Department to help with traffic control. I can't imagine that Mr. Haran couldn't work with the, the administration to identify, you know, parking to make things simpler. And, and if we have to, you know, have some people out there, extra people to, to monitor, not the school staff because I don't think they should be burdened, but to, to bring somebody in, maybe Mr. Haran could be, you know, in charge of traffic control. You know, get the contractors to, to cooperate. You know, there's, there's got to be things we can do to alleviate the issues. Now ironically, high schools have extra time. So, you know, if we didn't have this issue of being out, we could consider, you know, not having the high school, but even now, you know, they're, they're so far behind on what they've learned and, and what they have to do, I just couldn't support giving a day off. But I think we do have to be proactive to anticipate particularly traffic issues because I've been down there and there's, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of room, but, but there's got to be a way to, to look at it, come up with a plan, implement the plan so we can make the most of this situation. And, and while we're doing that, we should also look at, there are other schools that are polling places to see if there's anything we need or can do to facilitate the, the flow of the voters, you know, into the schools and traffic and buses and, and, you know, whatever else goes through that day. Thank you.
Ms. Kidby and then Mr. McCosker.
Just real quick, following up on Ms. Healy, how many of our schools are polling places? I, I know I have two in my district.
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Thank you.
So, yeah, this is a tough one. As Mr. Hyren stated that, you know, he and I are worried about Stafford High School. Stafford High School also has four days we missed in school in addition to the snow days because we opened late, right? And then we also still have the issue of the, the school being, you know, raised and, and the parking issue. So, but I do understand that the other places probably could need some help from the county staff, the police to keep open because we are, we do have about 30 more days at least of, I think, good weather that may give us a day or two of ice and snow. I, I am very concerned with, with Stafford High School as Mr. Hyren's mentioned. The other schools, I think we can get along with, with having school that day, but we are really going to have to focus on the traffic control pattern and some assistance from the county at Stafford High School because I could see that being a real big problem. So, you know, I, I will, I will support having school that day. However, I really do want Bruce to come on back to, and, and talk to us about who do we need to talk to? Of course, I'll talk to my counterpart who's the chair and say, hey, you know, Bob Thomas, please, you know, we need some help. I know it's Stafford. But, so that, that's my concern and where I'm, where I sit on this issue.
And Bruce could contact the Sheriff's-
And Bruce, you could contact the Sheriff's Department and, and move forward.
Dr. Benson, I'm going to defer to-
Can we go, I would like to do the safety before, and I think that's what he was-
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Fitzgerald to share our, our perspective from a safety perspective. And it is, it is a tough call, it really is. I mean, we want folks to exercise their right to vote, you know, participate in that opportunity. We also want to ensure that our young people are safe and, and one of the issues is, is about access and control in our, our buildings when we have large numbers of folks that are, are not normally there. We'll just put it that way. And there, we, you know, we do have a division not too far away that has decided that they're going to close. We have another division to the north of us that is looking at a, has a two-hour delay that was scheduled quite a while ago and I guess maybe they're thinking most folks would come early or they'd come late. The, the reality is, and before, before Mr. Fitzgerald shares, we'll make it work with, whatever is the pleasure of the board. And our, our number one priority will make, to make sure that our staff and students are, are safe. So whatever extra measures we can put into place to, to do that, depending upon what the decision of the board is, we will, we will do our best, absolutely our best.
So I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that the, the Sheriff's Office is concerned about the security elements inasmuch as that we can, our SROs are limited in terms of the areas that they can cover as an individual. We do have traffic that is in and out, but of course there will be traffic that will need to exit that particular, if they need to use restrooms. We, we will have ongoing educational activities taking place and we will not be able to be supervision throughout the building for all of the access and, and exit of, of people that are voting to ensure that they're not traveling throughout the building. So our administrative staff will be actually performing security for the voters as well as going about the business of, of carrying out the duties of, of their regular day in support of that activity as well. So they are and have let us know that they are somewhat concerned in that regard.
So the Sheriff's Department, their advice is to not have school?
I don't think they have shared that, that in particular, but they do have security concerns. They have let us know that as well as the Registrar, of course, he has, he has signed in on that. That is primarily concerned. The, the traffic issues are also, of course, but that I think we feel we can remedy particularly Stafford was, was brought to bear. And we are, are, indeed, and that is the case, we're anticipating bringing in additional resources to try to manage that as best we can possibly do along with managing some of the spaces that are available for the extra traffic. This is an extraordinary circumstance inasmuch as that there is a high-volume expectation for, for voters as, as we might expect. We do have, I did a quick survey of our nine comparisons. Spotsylvania, Prince William, Albemarle, Hanover, Henrico, Chesterfield are all listed on their websites as being closed. The other, the other, Loudoun is, is, it's hard to tell. It's unknown if Park here, Chesapeake are, are not listed, is closed at this particular time on their websites. That's the status that I've got available for you.
Madam Chair, I, I think the consensus of the board is starting, and I don't know if that changed anyone's mind, is starting to come around. Let's go ahead and, and stay as planned, but have the concern about, and I'm being lobbied by my son here, but that's beside the point. Um, and he should be in bed and asleep. But, uh, so I'm, I'm not going to make a motion to, to, to change the calendar and if someone else wants to, we can discuss that at that point. But I do want to make sure that we make a direct reach out to Stafford County Sheriff's Office with specific concern about Stafford High School. I know it's been discussed, I know you guys are, are on it. I would really like to see some traffic control there at Route 1, Enon Road and then directly into the school and the administration there at the school making sure, because I've been told that there have been mornings where they don't have directional folks out there directing traffic like they're supposed to be, is, they're supposed to have every day. I want to make sure they have folks out there directing traffic and identifying the voters to get them into the correct parking spaces so that everything goes as smoothly as possible and we avoid any, any safety issues out there.
I just want to ask one more time to you. I know that you will do whatever the board decides, but do we feel comfortable from a safety standpoint with this? I mean, that is, first and foremost, that is my concern, is having school open that day and the safety of our students. For, you know, I mean, because how do you regulate?
We've, I mean, we have done presidential primaries before in June, probably not as big, I agree, but they, it has been done. It, it's not that there's never been a voting event in our schools while they are operating, but I will defer to Dr. Benson, I apologize.
Well, the thing is that we're going to do everything within our power and work with local officials to mitigate as much risk as possible. But, you know, the reality is there's risk in everything we do every day. And, you know, the, what's different here is that we have folks that are not normally in schools there to exercise their vote to, to vote, their right to vote. And we just, we need to make sure that we're, we're comfortable with additional measures that we put in place that are within the best of our ability to control access to the rest of the school. And I, I would suggest that not just for Stafford High, but that we clearly articulate to the board what will be in place at every one of the polling locations that are our schools.
And, and may I just caveat?
Yes.
And that's exactly, I mean, you, I could flip, I could flip on this issue to say, close, shut it down, teachers stay home as well. If you come back and say, hey, we, we can't, we can't effectively, we're getting no support and we can't effectively take care of the safety of the students, if the staff comes back and says that, then guess what? I'll flip and say, close it down, everyone have a day off. So far, snow on March 1st.
That's right. I want to clear the lines.
If I, oh, Ms. Kidby, did you all kind of-
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the, the, the timing. March 1st is like just a few weeks away. Like Ms. Fallon, my concern is the safety of our students, always the safety of our students. I, as I said, I have two schools that are polling places within my district, both of which get a great deal of traffic. The Harrisonville District gets a great deal of traffic during the primaries in, in the polling places. So it's a concern for me. I would, I would lead toward, toward closing them down. That would be my inclination based on the information that I've gotten so far.
I haven't spoken yet. I, I agree with Dr. Benson. This is a, a difficult situation, but it's mostly made difficult because it hasn't been thought through. Again, our policies, our plans, we need to make some of these decisions. How are we going to treat polling places? Things like that broader concept. I also think though that we can mitigate, mitigate some of this by making teacher parking different places as long as we know what is going on in there. How do we, how do we minimize this impact? And I know everybody talks about the safety of our students. I mean, I know Ms. Healy and I, I know, talked to you all at length about access to our buildings. I will say that is one area. We both have talked about staff. If, if there is going to have to be an entrance communication, something at some of those schools, we need to make sure that we have additional staff there. Again-
Have additions?
Well, we need to figure out how we're going to accommodate that. And probably one point that I know hasn't been made as much and my, if my kids are watching, they're going to laugh, I actually think there's a lot of value in having our students see a huge voter turnout if that is what we are expecting. My kids know, they don't think that if they ever are over 18 and they can't, and they don't vote, they know they can't complain. I think there is some value in having our kids see a voting place full of people personally.
I would like to move that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I just want to say that if we got a recommendation from Sheriff Decatur that we close our schools because he had concerns as the sheriff of Stafford County, you know, for the safety of our students, I wouldn't hesitate as much as I hate to, to have a school day off to support that. But at this point, I have not heard that recommendation from the sheriff. Is that correct? And if anything changes with that, you know, please, you know, bring, bring it back to us at the next meeting.
What I have heard, Ms. Healy, is that the sheriff does have concerns, but I've not heard it personally and I've not heard it from our risk management and safety office that he has personally said, shut the schools down. So I would like to say that I've not heard it directly, but we can certainly ask his, him personally and see what he says.
That perhaps Dr. Benson could initiate that contact and let the board know if, if it is his conclusion that, you know, there is a risk to our students or our staff by having the schools open, you know, imminent risk, then that's something that would change me to, to relook at this. But otherwise, you know, I think our parents want the kids to be in school, I think the teachers want the kids to be in school, and I think the kids need to be in school as much as possible. And that, that's not, that's not even considering the fact, you know, we might have to go longer at the end of the year. It's just because of everything that we've got, you know, to look forward to with the test and, and how much we've lost with those seven days off, which were necessary. Thank you.
And this is on, just for the record, this is on information, this is not on an action item. So that's why, you know, I've discussed, I've said, hey, this is how I feel. Give me some more information to come back for the action items.
Will we bring this back next meeting?
We're, yeah, that's, yeah.
That is the will of the board, we will have it back on here.
That's what we should be doing is it's on information this week and it'll come back as an action.
And that's what I'm asking. So we will bring it back for action because we will need to have an answer. And you will, Dr. Benson, someone will speak directly to the sheriff and get that information.
Thank you. What I, what I would say is if there are interested parties, people will know this, the more we can have in writing anecdotal does not help us. I have shared with my board a pretty detailed letter of why another school district did close and it had a lot of information. Help us get the right information, but I do not want to make a decision based on what we think could happen, when we think people vote, when we, we would like to have some insight and we will reexamine this if there is some reason to examine it earlier and we have to do it as part of a special called meeting that is already on for the 20th for other reasons. There is something imminent, the more, the more information we can get to our public, the sooner we will do it. So as soon as we have any game changer information prior, if there is any prior to the 20, if I can do my math, 3rd, is that our next meeting? We'll bring it.
The week before we'd have to close.
Correct. Any further comment? Okay, moving on to 11.02 information. Award in construction to Waco Inc. in the amount of $4,117,300 using VSPA bonds for the repair of the mechanical systems at HH Pool Middle School. Any questions on this item? I'm sure for Mr. Haran would be our point of contact.
Madam Chair, a couple?
Any, Ms. Kidby? He's hiding from you.
Ms. Kidby, do you think it would help to move this up to action tonight? Well, that, that's one of the things that I wanted to ask.
Don't get too comfortable, Mr. Haran.
I, I just had a couple of questions. I remember when HH Pool Middle School opened up. How old is that school?
I don't know. It's a 90s, a 90-
Wasn't really that long ago?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm going, why is, why is the mechanical system in such a bad shape?
Well, it's just life expectancy.
Really? It's been that long?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Holy cow. Because this is a huge repair, but it, it was budgeted and it's part of the, the bond money, right?
Yes, ma'am. We have it divided into two years funding. This year, we have funds for it and then it's a two-year project.
Okay.
Identified in the agenda item. We have two segments. We have it in two phases, one being done this coming summer if approved and another the second summer. So we're borrowing money this year and then we'll borrow money again next year for that project.
To Ms. Healy's question, would it, would it help if we took it to action tonight?
Absolutely. But certainly if you want to follow the process, that's fine with me also. We deliberately brought the project to you in February so that we had time to order some long lead item. However, any additional time would be grateful and we would appreciate it, but-
Okay. Ms. Healy, I'm going to move for approval.
Move for action.
Or move for action, sorry. Okay.
There's a motion and a second to move item 11.02 to action. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded for approval, no further discussion. All those in favors, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion, 11.02 is approved.
I have a port of order right now. I, I know historically when we've had an information item that we moved to action, we go through two motions. We move it to action and then we move it for approval. Is that necessary? Can't we go straight to approval? Can't we go straight to approval?
I think it is.
It is.
It is actually necessary.
Is it? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mancher.
I know, she was trying to help me.
I was just trying, yeah.
11.03, approve the proposed CIP. Dr. Benson, any comment there?
Don't we want to move this to action?
I don't think so.
Well, I don't know that we can move it to action because it's, it's, it's not balanced. And so there's, there are some additional considerations that, that we need to explore. Part of this is waiting to get some more concrete feedback from the supervisors.
I'm going to do like a contingency approval.
Well, and I'll double check with Mr. Haran, if it's on here for information.
That's correct. You know, we, we plan to bring it back for action at the end of the month, and did want to point out a couple of items, just for your information. We, from when we had the work session, we have since made some changes. We've met with both the Fab and then the Joint Fab, where there's been discussions centered around the CIP. So you may notice that the renovation of North Stafford High School Library was changed from a bond funded to revenue, current revenue. So it's now embedded in the infrastructure portion of this proposed CIP. We also made changes to the Ferry Farm rebuild from a 950 student plus 36 pre-K to a 750 plus 36 pre-K program. So that reduced that roughly 1.7, 1.8 million in the CIP under the debt. And that, again, that was part of, we also made some changes to the tail end of the CIP, two significant changes. We moved Elementary School 18 one year to the right, and from when I briefed you at the works, work session. So you'll see that in there. So we only have planning dollars associated with that school in the last year of the CIP. We also moved the high school another year to the right. Okay? So those are, those are the significant changes since you were briefed during the work session, and I think that was prior to Christmas. I think it was in December. Yes, ma'am.
So we've essentially done what, what we can do without looking at the possibility of infusing some additional cash into the program, or looking at working collaboratively with the board supervisors in, with regard to projects that sit on their side of the balance sheet.
Right now, where there is an imbalance with what we think the proposed county CIP is, is in the first four to five years of the CIP. And it involved Moncur roughly to the tune of about $5 million, and it involves Ferry Farm to the tune of about three and a half or so million dollars. So that, that, those are, and those are rough figures. I, the specifics I know, but I'm just generalizing right now, but it's generally those numbers. So that's where we have to work, we are working with the staff as well as the board supervisors to try and find some options, some favorable options that we can pursue or bring to the board.
I also like to point out to the board that the increase, and I'll speak to Moncur specifically, that $5 million is not all due to the increase in change in the elementary design standards. Some of that is just projected increased costs and increases in design, design costs to the tune of about 1.2 million dollars, I think, of the five.
Yes, sir, it was from cost per square foot. We had used a certain cost per square foot last year. We changed that, we increased it by $5 per square foot. If, if you recall, I think we brought that forward during the work session. But that associated with some of the cost, and we have that broken out between how much the actual ed specs is, is increasing the project, and how much we would have asked for some small incremental changes anyways to the project. So we have that broken out, if the board, if that's important to the board, we can certainly send it to you.
If I may? Yeah, I have some, some concerns with, with sending over a CIP that we know is out of balance. We had a conversation, the two fabs had conversations concerning the CIP. There seems to be strong support, at least by the members of the Board of Supervisors Fab, for the Moncur rebuild as we've designed it, and as we've approved that, that conceptual design of that. However, not necessarily to the tune of being able to give us additional funding. So if we, if we bring this over out of balance, while we're making a strong statement as to what we want to do with Moncur Elementary School and perhaps some of these other infrastructure items that we have, I think we need to be prepared as, as a board to have to make some additional adjustments to this CIP. I'm not recommending that, that we make the adjustments prior to sending it over. I think it, it's worth a kick down the road to, to give it a try, but I'm not real optimistic. I, I don't know what their discussion was at their retreat this weekend. I also have a little bit of concern that we'll go another 12 months, 18 months down the road and say, "Oh, just kidding, we don't really have $2 million for the library at North Stafford High School." I would like that to be a priority and a, and a understanding by this board, even if it's just a verbal understanding, that, that we're going to make those changes to North Stafford High School Library one way or the other. If it's, if it's not a specific line item on the CIP, that, that it does become a priority for cash capital, because right now, that's, that's how it's being proposed to be funded.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Benson, did you, I didn't know if you were.
Well, I just had one other piece of information that is, I think is really powerful information in, in our efforts to look at how to enhance teaching and learning in, in the schools and the way kids are interacting with other kids in the school and with, with teachers. And just to give you an example, okay? The Brookpoint Library, okay, in the 2014-15 school year, November, had just over 2,000 individual student visits a year ago, right? This year, they had almost 4,000 student visits during that month. In that, a year ago, they had 42 classes sign up to use the library. This past year, in that same month, they had 127 classes sign up to use the library. So as we start to think about how we want to enhance teaching and learning in our schools and how those spaces are designed, we can have a significant impact on, on the way folks are using these resources. So it, this is, it is an exciting place for us to be, and we're going to have to work hard, I think, to make it happen for, for Moncur.
And for North Stafford, right?
Yes, Ms. Healy.
I, I want to echo Ms. Kibbe's concern about North Stafford and that we make sure that we're going to identify that funding, because we're not talking this year and we're not talking next year, we're talking the year after that, is that correct?
We, I believe the CIP carries it in FY '17.
Seventeen.
Yes, ma'am.
I always get confused, does that mean the summer of '16?
It would actually mean, well, since it's operating funds, it would mean as soon as we go into '17, if the funds are available.
Like July 1st?
Yes, ma'am, we could start to design it with the following summer, so the summer of '17, we would be actually renovating.
Was there any reason why we couldn't consider using some of those carryover funds from last year for the design of it? I mean, we, it's another item on here, but it's something that if, if we're, if we're really committed to this, then we, we've got those funds available, we could just say, "Okay, let's, let's do it now," because, you know, things tend to slip. As we can see, you know, we're sliding back, and we're talking about 10 years from now, who knows? You know, and needs will change. But, but this North Stafford Library, you know, I think is really important, because we haven't done anything at North Stafford for quite a while. And, and we all know, you know, what an improvement that would be to a, to a school. So I would ask the board to consider using some of the funds that we're asking the supervisors to return to us to start the design on here. So it's not, it's, it's another agenda item, but as long as we're talking about this, you know, this improvement, because it's easy to say, "Oh, we'll use operating funds," and then there's no operating funds, so then, "Oh, we'll look at next year." So it's, it's going to be a tough one. But let's, you know, let's put the money where the talk is.
Yeah, to Ms. Healy's comment, I know in the 8.3 million that, that we're asking, there's 1.8 for, for infrastructure items. I, I don't know what that, if that's earmarked for anything specific, or if it's just.
It is. We, we have a list of projects for that.
Yeah, I haven't seen that list, so I wasn't aware of that, but, and then we have 4.3 that we're recognizing this year as well. So there might be some opportunity there as well.
Okay, if I hear, I don't hear any further discussion. Like I said, there will be reach out between the two boards. Sounds like Dr. Benson and Mr. Haran are going to be available to the extent that you talk to and discuss with your supervisor where they are. We will try and come up with a good process. I know other jurisdictions approach their CIPs in a different manner, in a more collaborative, see Ms. Neely, I got it, I got it, collaborative, way of looking at projects as a community and making sure we prioritize them well. And I hope going forward, we as both boards and as, you know, a county, looking at our resources, may want to examine some new ways to look at our CIP and how we form it going forward. Right into 11.04 is to discuss and approve a cash capital reserve fund. This item tracks directly with one of our budget priorities. I believe, I guess we didn't number them, but it was about the fourth one down on the page for us visual learners. And it's cash capital reserve fund.
That was also requested by the board supervisors.
And they allowed us the ability to do it. If you all have read the resolution, it goes through a lot of the principles, the history of this, and why it is very, very important. The Fab has spent a lot of time over every one of these words, or most of these words, making sure that this is for the specific purpose. If you have the item called up on your screen on the first page, the final whereas paragraph from the bottom, I believe, is critical. The history's nice, but this is so that we understand that the school board finds that the establishment of such a fund will benefit the citizens and students of Stafford County by allowing the division to maintain a reliable base of funding to help meet unanticipated capital needs, including unanticipated increases in construction costs, provide additional funding for emergency projects, offset fluctuations in revenue projections, and/or provide a course of funding for additional infrastructure improvements that may be necessary. In my way of planning, looking at my own, you know, planning in our budget, when we know some needs are coming in the future, like probably all of our appliances will go out at the same time, having that ability to have that fund, and that's how I kind of view this fund, and the board of supervisors has agreed that this would be a great way of financial management. Sorry, that was sort of the introduction, but if there are any questions for the experts more on this, open for any questions, or any comments certainly from, from members.
Again, I think it's important that, that this reserve is just that, a reserve for unanticipated capital needs, that we don't even inadvertently say, "Well, we've got that reserve fund, we can always use that," so we don't have to put something on our infrastructure budget. No, no, that's not what this is for. This is for unanticipated increases, unanticipated capital needs, offsetting unanticipated fluctuations. So this is in fact a reserve.
All right, if, I hear nothing further. Let's look at 11.05. Approval of resolution requesting appropriation by the County of Stafford, Virginia Board of Supervisors of the remaining balance of the FY 2015 carryforward funds. Is there any discussion? Or Mr. Wolf?
We found out some new information today on this.
Okay.
And I've actually taken the liberty of putting together an alternative resolution because of those changes, so that you could see what the impact of the changes were. There were two specifically, and as soon as I hand this out to everybody, I will review them.
Thank you.
As you recall, last year's budget, fiscal year 2016 budget that we're now in, the board of supervisors agreed to fund the purchase of buses through lease purchase financing. We found out today that in reality, even though that's what Dr. Benson recommended was to repay that debt, the board of supervisors actually has not yet entered into the master lease for that. But they've already given us the resolution to go ahead and acquire the buses. So in essence, they've already given us the money we need, but that money is really tied to the carryforward funds. So the amount that's remaining is $836,000 less as a result of that. And in addition, based on conversation with the budget director and chief financial officer for the county, what is going to happen with the cash capital reserve fund is there's going to be a reservation of fund balance of $3,500,000 as a designated restriction of fund balance for the purpose of meeting the carryforward funds, which will be appropriated as we, the school board authorizes use of. So in essence, those funds don't need to be appropriated now because we don't have a specific use for those funds just yet. So the $3,500,000 was also removed from the total amount that we had been asking for, so that the new net amount in the last paragraph is the $4,261,673. $3,500,000 still remains with the county, subject to the school board's authorization of any future amounts to be used from the school's cash capital reserve fund.
Madam Chair, are you suggesting then that they'll hold the reserve, and as we have need specifically for the reserve, we have to ask for an appropriation, and then they have to approve that appropriation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that, that's the way we envisioned that working, Ms. Kibbe, because we, we can't carry money over from one year to the next.
Yeah, I, I get that, I get that, but I, I didn't know that we were going to have to request a reappropriation. I somehow thought we would have more flexibility with that reserve.
It's comparable to the manner in which we ask for reappropriation for monies that were carryforward from, from the previous year. It's just that we'll ask for it for, it'll come out of that reserve for a specific capital project.
So when we ask for the appropriation, it will need their board action before it can be appropriated?
Yes. We will bring an agenda item before you, you will authorize it, it'll go across the street and it'll go through the regular process.
Okay, okay, just so I understand, thank you.
Yeah, I have to admit that I actually had a different interpretation of how the flow of funds was going to work also, but in the end, you know, six of one, half a dozen of the other.
Yeah, I get it.
Mr. Wolf, there, I think there might be a zero missing on the, the fifth whereas statement, $836,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, there is a zero missing, yeah.
And I can, before this is signed by the chair, I can make sure that I revise it, but if we agree as, as amended, that this is one of the, the things that's necessary is to make this number, I did this really quick between the beginning of tonight's meeting and now.
Can I ask another? I feel like I'm dominating.
But our budget for fiscal year 2016 has already been increased by the $836,000. It's already been increased by the $1,150,000 that's referred to in the second paragraph as well.
The, the 18, $1,850,000, do we have an idea of what some of the big ticket items are there?
I think I received the schedule from Scott, it's, I think Scott might be able to share that with you.
I do, I can just give you a brief title of the projects, just for your info, but I can provide you with the spreadsheet on this. Replace generator at HH Pool Middle School for $200,000. Repair gym roof at Gary Meltzer's complex for $400,000. Replace cooling towers. Replace cooling towers at North Stafford High School for 450. Repair fire alarm at Colonial Forge High School for 150. Replace CTE dust collector systems at AG Wright, Mountain View, and Drew Middle School. And they're, they're not all replaced, some are repaired, you know, in that, but three dust collecting systems. Install fire suppression systems at the Network Operations Center at Colonial Forge and in this building. And then finally, repair erosion and drainage at Dixon Smith Middle School for 200,000. So, that all totals 1.85. Yes, ma'am, so.
Sorry, I'm going to assume that those were all on our infrastructure schedule at some point.
Yes, ma'am, and they would have been rolled into FY 17, competing for the budget, but they were candidates, so we took the top ones, put them to go, to compete for the.
If I could get a list of those, that'd be great.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'll provide it to Roberta, and she'll pass it out to the board.
Terrific, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Out of priorities, the one, the Melchers one, does that, is that enough to fix those roofs there?
It just, it fixed the entire gym building, which addresses several areas of significant concern. We also utilize some of that space for alted, as well as head start. But it doesn't address, we have another project identified that addresses where Kathy Massey's office is, that area and around the cafeteria and that part. But if you go from the 1933 building and start working your way towards Kathy's office, we've replaced the roofs and then the outbuildings, the Washington.
The gym's been almost unusable, hasn't it?
Well, I won't say unusual, but it, but we have had leaks, and it has, it has been affecting the gym floor, and so, yes.
And that's enough to get that gym, to get that roof, so, another 20 years.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, there's a note here on the agenda item that staff is requesting that this be moved to action this evening. Are we prepared to do that?
Do I hear a motion?
I just want to add that the Board of Supervisors has this agenda item on its agenda for its next meeting, which is next Tuesday.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like, Madam Chair, I'd like you to make a motion to move.
Yep, Mr. Hirons made a motion, do you want to second?
Oh, he did, okay, I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Neely?
I have a question. This 3.5 million for the cash capital reserve, is that a magic number, is that just what was left?
That basically is what was left. There was nothing magical about how we determined it.
Okay, and that brings me back to my question before, would the board consider using a portion of this money from last year to fund the design of the library at North Stafford, which would reduce this cash capital reserve by a certain amount? Do we know how much that design is, Mr. Haran, the North Stafford?
212,000 dollars is the estimate for the design.
I mean, really, it's not a magic number, 3.5, it's a round number, but.
But we may have enough funds in this year's year-end funds.
Shall you have the funds?
I think it'd be smarter to deal with it with this year's funds, because this ties directly into Ms. Kidby's highlighted concern about the cash capital fund being used as, oh, this and here.
But it's not in there.
It's been funded.
It's not in there, you can't say we're taking it out, because it's not in there if we don't put it in.
Or we put it in the bank, what do we want to spend it on?
So, that's not a valid argument.
I would just add though, the 4,631,000 that we estimated, after using funds for 20 teachers and 25 paras and to cover what we had budgeted for as a salary lapse of 1,500,000 in the '16 budget, that that remaining amount is what we anticipate, based on our detailed analysis and review of all of our contracted positions, to be available in '16 as well as rolling over to '17.
216,000 or so? You expect more than that to roll over, don't you?
That's what I'm saying. The 4,631,000 is an estimate for '16, as well as the amount that rolls over for '17.
So, would there be any issue if that were to come to the board as a separate agenda item before next year, next fiscal year?
Can do that.
Is that, is that something the board would entertain?
I would like to see it as a comment as an agenda item, yeah. I don't want to mess with this, particularly since it's going before the Board of Supervisors.
Well, I don't care where it's coming from, I just want to get it moving.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so on the next information agenda that we have, it would come on?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I believe we've heard of strong support for the North Stafford High School Library. I believe that we have made sure, and I would like to thank Ms. Kidby of highlighting the point about this cash capital reserve. I do want to keep the board mindful of that. I would not want to violate it right off the bat, so I appreciate that, but I do believe that we have that going forward. Any further discussion? If not, all those in.
Let me just make a motion.
Move to action.
Oh, I thought Scott.
To move to action.
Oh, yes, I.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve 11.05.
Wait, we have to do it, no, we have to move it to action, because Scott moved it to action.
Oh, we didn't, okay, oh, my God. Look at the time!
I know, exactly. So, on the motion regarding moving item 11.05 to action, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, do I have another motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries unanimously on 11.05. Moving on to 11.06, which is kind of a companion with 11.07, can we discuss those together, since they seem to be similar? So, let's combine those.
Before Mr. Sly comes up and provides you with some additional information, just wanted to highlight for you the fact that the agenda item related to the policy, that all that's included there is a reference to how principals now need to review, you know, the compliance with the requirements. It doesn't do anything more than that, and then the regulation gets into the insertion of the USDA Smart SAC guideline and the 30 exemption rule, and how that works. And so, having said that now, I'm going to step out and let Mr. Sly carry the day.
Thank you, Mr. Sly.
School Board members, Dr. Benson, it looks like I'll be speaking in behalf of an item that I might be soloing on here based on some of the comments and concerns, and it's important that we understand sort of what's involved. We are approved for Smart Snacks now. There are regulations regarding what we serve with the meal program at lunch and breakfast, and also à la carte and Smart Snacks. So, the school lunch program is in compliance, and the school system was as of last year, we implemented Smart Snacks. So, the muffin cart is still available, and it's working, and it's working five days a week in some schools and three in others, and it's available to sell. So, this isn't a jeopardy of eliminating the muffin cart. It is, it speaks to the exemptions, the number of exemptions the state has allowed for days or events we would not sell. We would sell items that don't meet those guidelines. So, I, obviously, there are, there are a number of great ways that these funds are used, and my kids went to prom, and we paid for after-prom as a fee, and there's a number of ways to fund all these important things, and no one would belittle those at all. It's important. I just, I speak to the caution that the big easy program that no one sees is what represents every single kid every single day. So, we want to make sure that as we, as we make these decisions, the 30 exemptions are written in there, they're, that's what we're, what's in front of you tonight, that we take in consideration, that it is a hard thing to control as far as how those exemptions are applied and how they expand. Basically, what it's offering is food that is unavailable at any other times, and it has no regs there. So, it'll be fun food, high calorie food, and it will, and it's easy sales, that's why, that's why it's selling. So, that will catch on, and it will continue same as muffin cart went from one school to every school. Those are the, that's the nature of the beast, but as we go in, as you travel down that road, or consider that, you folks are the decision makers. Let me give you some information that does play into this. The school meal program that we have represents everybody, and it's built on participation. It's reward, you're incentivized for participation. If we have increases in breakfast and lunch, then we get more commodities, and that represents, 46% of our income comes from the participation, 5.8 million last year, and that all ties into participation. When we run into situations like when we first implemented the new meal pattern, we had 1,200 meal a day decrease in participation, because those were, at the time, very dramatic changes. With that, we responded, because we're a self-sufficient program, we essentially reduced staff, we laid off 15 people. That's the equivalent of three elementary schools. And we closed serving lines, all these things are potential. As we get into reductions in participation, then we will respond so that we can remain solvent. And so, it will affect whether we increase meal prices. Then, once we adjust staffing and food purchasing and staffing levels to our participation level, the remaining sort of optional cuts, we put in $152,000 average a year in replacement of equipment. We transfer $200,000 a year to you folks, and we share revenue with the schools right now in vending of $10,000. So, we're in business with the schools, selling Smart Snacks through the vending machines, and we share that revenue with the schools. All those things are out there and that are, we generate that income to make those payments now, but they are not, they don't put food on trays. So, those would be optional things that we have to consider if the, if the competitive situation on a daily basis creates decreases in our, in our program participation. About one in every, 3.5, 29% of our students are free and reduced. So, what does happen is, as we get into competitive popular food items that are being sold, and the full-priced student exercises that privilege proportionately, what'll happen is, the, as the full-price paying child decreases in participation, it affects our free and reduced participation. That decreases also, and I can give you an example of that. We had a middle school that decided to, in crowd control and noise control at breakfast time, they opened up a gymnasium at the same time as breakfast, and the kids could use their electronic devices in the gym, but they couldn't take food in there because they didn't want a messy floor. And what happened was, not only did we lose full-price eaters in large droves, we lost free and reduced kids, because those children don't want to be the only kids standing in the breakfast line, and they'll, and they'll understand that. They're overtly identified, and they don't want to be in that position, and that helps, happens more so at the middle and high than any other level. But that's, that's real. I hope we don't put ourselves in a position with a, that we're replacing, or we're planning, or creating a situation where we're replacing a meal or two with a snack, whether it's, you know, on a daily basis. That again affects meal participation.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Are you getting at, you're trying to paint the picture of competition with the snack carts. Is there any data that, specific data, that the snack carts are competing with school lunches and driving down participation in school lunches, school breakfast, whatever it might be, or vending? I think that's part of where the competition might be at best, but.
Yeah, the best way to do that would be to describe the impact when we went to Smart Snacks.
I'm with Mr. Hirons on that, because that's my exact thing, is this doesn't correlate just because you're, you went to Smart Snacks and participation went down, because we were, not only were we throwing half the food out in the garbage, and this is coming from the feeding lines, right? We're throwing half the food out in the garbage, because the kids won't eat it, and the kids don't eat it because they don't like it.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about the meal pattern, and we're talking about Smart Snacks. Those are two separate things. The Smart Snacks are going to be à la carte items. So, à la carte items are items that we wouldn't, wouldn't be part of the meal pattern. The Smart Snacks are going to, are rules regarding à la carte, or whatever else is sold during, during the day.
And is even that being, is even that being affected by PTAs, PTOs, school, student activities, selling snacks in the school?
For high schoolers, because that's where it happens. That's, that's the question. So, what you're, what you're saying, well, again, what I'm saying is, if we compare when we weren't, when we had no regulations regarding à la carte, compared to now, there is a decrease. So, as, as students have an opportunity to, you know, to buy things that have no regulations, then it would be.
Do you have the data that says that? Do you ever, a survey, anything that says that to us, though?
And would they have bought the stuff if, is it, is it about the Smart Snacks, and they don't want those? Or is it about the competition with the muffin cart?
What's, I don't understand the difference.
Yeah, both.
The muffin, the muffin carts are out there selling approved items right now. It's, you know, the muffin carts, the exemption rule would be how many days that we want, that you decide, or how many exemptions you have. There's 30 maximum, and how you really interpret that, that's what this is really all about. You know.
But they are cart lines, how many, they are cart lines are only open during breakfast and lunch, right? Kids can't go to, and most of our schools can't go.
What would happen is, we're, we have a, we got a breakfast program happening at every school during the, during the set period, and we have a lunch period happening at every school, and then we have vending machines with, and I'm talking high school only. We have vending machines with approved, Smart Snack approved items in there, and those are shared revenue with the schools.
But when can they access them?
You're going, a majority of the time, all the time. Now, you might have to go to certain principals who say, "Oh, we do, we don't," but those, as my understanding is, those are all day long.
And when do typically the, mostly muffin carts, cookie carts that are in business, when do they operate?
They would happen between breakfast, they're going to happen between breakfast and lunch during class time, they're going to visit classes.
Not during breakfast, or not during lunch?
What isn't optional for this board would be to compete during the breakfast and lunch period. The, in other words, we've agreed as a county to participate in the national school lunch program, and the, and the rules regarding that are you cannot sell items during the breakfast and lunch period. The business entities that's happening.
I don't think we're asking to do that, and that's, that's my point, is the carts, you know, I get it, you know, the kid, a kid has something at 10 o'clock, he may not want something at 11:30 as lunch period. These are growing kids, I don't think that's happening very often. And until there's a metric that says, it says kids are buying these snacks, and that is directly correlated to a reduction in kids buying school lunch. I just don't see the connection, I want to make sure that, or, you know, I'm favoring an idea of making the carts much more accessible than what you're proposing here of a 30, 30 event limit being counted as each day of operation is one event.
Well, I mean, this is ultimately going to be your choice until we get further direction from, from the state.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm a little lost for words, not only, not because I don't think I can come up with financials, is because the, the impact, when, when there is competition, when there, when our, when food is sold. So, you're asking me to say that would a child buy a 400 calorie muffin versus a snack-approved item? That, that's why we're selling, that's why they're being sold, because they sell.
And how well-defined is a snack? I brought my little props. I was in Stafford High School today, my wife was at Drew Middle School yesterday, selling Valentine candy grams. So, if a child purchases one of these for another kid, for another student, you know, this is edible, this is food, and I'm sure it probably does not fall under the Smart Snack limitations. So, the days they're selling those, that's in competition with being able to get into the 30-day availability of snack cart or 15 other organizations that want to sell a candy bar one day, or something along those lines. That's my struggle with this, is 30 days being counted as 30 events is going to just limit any organization's ability to fundraise, or it's going to cause building administration to really play, I don't want to phrase it as play favorites, but, but. to really play, I don't want to phrase it as play favorites, but, but have a very strict process in which they select which fundraiser is available on which day.
So, so, um, the food is, I mean, so it's, there are the things to fundraise other than food.
I, I get it, I get it. But that, that's, that's the biggest bang for the, for fundraisers and I do not want to limit my PTAs, PTOs on their ability to raise funds over something that is, is being shoved down our throat, frankly. Not, not by you, but by the federal government and, you know, the state's trying to help us out here. They, they really, you know, um, hand, hand, I mean, buddy. Um, you know, she really put in the legwork to get the state to help us out.
And you, and there are thirty exemptions and so the, the idea now is to define what is, what is an exemption.
Right.
Okay? Well, I, I proposed, I mean, we, we, the health advisory put together what we interpreted it to be. If it's multiplied by every single day we have a muffin cart, then, and that's one fundraiser, then that's a hundred and seventy-seven days of muffin cart. And if that's what your, if that's what the mission should be during school, then, I mean, you folks are the ones that are deciding whether we have enough, you know, whether we're, we're teaching at all, what our, what our, what a, you know, balanced diet should be, or whether we're not. I mean, this is about all the children and, I mean, I, I'm really a little at odds to say, you know, my mission has been for thirty years to do a meal program that, that met the standards. That's what your expectations are of me. So, and that's what we're doing. What, when I point out some of the competition things, you need to understand that, that if, if we're, if we're, if we're a sidebar and the, and the schools are in, in the meal business, then it will affect what we're doing. And because it does generate a lot of revenue, there'll be more to it. That's the idea for the guidelines. So you'll have to come up with what the expectations would be and then, then, um, you know, I'll do my best to deal with them and come to you when, you know, the, these...
What do you attribute, what do, what do, you mentioned that you had a forty-six percent decrease or, you, you have that in your notes right when you started off about the participation. So what do you attribute your decrease to?
No, I have, forty-six percent of our revenue comes from the federal government.
Okay, so what, and then what was your decr, how much did...
We lost, we lost twelve hundred meals a day when we first got started. We've regained some of that. But there's a number of things that affect this and boy, if the beeper was on, I'd already been rung. What, what happens is, no, I mean, it's not, it's not a short, it's not a short subject. During the time we had the meal guidelines implemented, it, and they were dramatic changes, okay? So, uh, and we did our best to recover from that. At the same time, there were mandatory price increases, what they call meal equity rules. So for years, Stafford County was fifty cents under what the value the federal government had of a meal. So we, we had to raise our lunch prices at the same time.
I remember that, I remember.
So we've, we've done that. Then we implemented the breakfast program, uh, changes, and then smart snacks. So all three of those have happened over the last three to four-year period. Um, the product selection is getting better, the manufacturers are getting better at making whole wheat products, we're getting better, so the products are getting better. The, the client, we've, we've gained a percent a year in, in free kids. So we went from fourteen percent ten years ago, now we're twenty-nine. So it's...
So that's a lot, no, so that's, that's a lot of...
There's a lot of stuff that goes into it.
A lot of stuff's going on.
Well, what, what happened, I can tell you, there's a lot of things in that, in that mix.
So did we have a decrease in student, uh, back to the numbers. So we, are you saying there's a decrease of students going to the lunch line or breakfast line from years ago?
There's a decrease right now. We have, we're still almost a thousand meals under what we averaged before the meal changed, for the new meal pattern went in place. The, the lunch has never been more monitored and never been more regulated and never been healthier.
Is that only high school or is that across?
That's across the board.
That's the county. What we lost were large numbers of paying students and we gained them in...
That goes back to the kids don't like the food.
No correlation. I mean, it would only be relevant if that was just the high school numbers.
Yeah. So my point, yeah, I guess my point earlier was that, not, not very well stated, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff on your plate, Mr. Chapman, about free and reduced, you know, and then the guidelines and, um, however, you know, there's a lot of stuff on, on, on everyone's plate when it comes to trying to gain some, some method of funding to make sure that our kids are getting, uh, keeping safe at prom and, and getting these extra things. And if you can't come into us and say, you know, because if, if, you know, school board, if you don't do this, this is what's gonna happen, then you can understand the position of maybe the majority of this board saying, you know what, we're gonna interpret this as liberal as we can. I mean, does that make sense to you?
Oh, yes. And then I can, then I can return with results of whatever. This is, we are at a, we are at a crossroad. I mean, I'm no, I'm no dummy, I understand that.
Right.
I will tell you that it is, um, the, uh, and I don't mean this sarcastically, this is almost impossible to control. You will find that this, that once this is out there, it will not be, you will not be able to monitor it and it, and, and then, so, um, uh, because it's easy sales, because it's repeatable sales, then there will be multiple people coming on board. That will redirect what we do as a, as a school system nutritionally for our students.
Right.
I mean, I...
Well, I mean, we'll, I think we'll look to you for, for, for our guidance on, you know, how do we keep in between the lines when the, as you stated earlier, once the decision is made, you know? We'll be here helping that issue. But no, I, I don't have any more questions.
This is a, um, question on another track. Of our students that buy breakfast and lunch, do you know what percentage of them use cash versus the accounts that their parents establish for them?
I can tell you that, uh, almost fifty, right at fifty percent of our kids utilize a credit card for, for payment.
So fifty percent pay cash?
Fifty percent pay cash and they may, they may put it into their account in a, in a fifty-dollar bill and then work off their account. But half of them pay cash and half of them pay by credit card.
Okay, so the, really the ones that would be competing with the carts would be the cash. So that's...
Well, that doesn't mean that the kid who paid with, uh, who, who, whose mom put a credit card payment, doesn't mean he doesn't have cash.
Wait, he can't...
Participate in that.
Right, but he's, but the, the point is, you know, mom or dad or the guardian are paying the money into the account and the money paid into the account cannot be used for the muffin cart. So that's really not going to be competition.
Unless they don't use it.
Yeah.
Unless they don't use it. But, but bottom line is, I mean, and you've done an incredible job over the years of funding, um, you know, hoods or whatever you call those, you know, different things for the kitchens. And I've always felt that that was a, a bonus for Stafford County schools, you know, what you've done. And, but, but we're really not in a money-making, um, plan, at least I don't believe we are for the, for the nutrition. I mean, we hopefully will pay our own way, but, you know, if, if that doesn't happen, we'd have to, to relook at it. But at, at this point, I, I just don't see that the decrease in the participation is a result of the muffin cart. I can tell you, last Friday, I met with a Cub Scout pack. Is that what they're called, a pack? Adorable kids, all elementary from two different schools. And you know what they asked me? They asked me questions, they said, why don't we have better food? You know, why isn't our food better at school? And I explained that Mr. Chapman does everything he can, there's federal, you know, regulations that you're, you want to get healthy food and, and the comment came up tonight, you know, why do you have to take fruit? Well, the federal government says we have to put fruit as part of the, the deal. So your hands are tied, you know, to, to that extent. But I, I, I just, I, I don't feel that having a muffin cart is going to compete with the breakfast or lunch and that, you know, it, it should be, you know, a supplement. But sometimes people aren't doing it because they just don't like the food. Or they may like certain things and they'll eat that day. I don't, I don't know, and we've had this discussion over the years, you know, what can you do when the federal government's, you know, saying what you have to have and to a certain extent where you can buy it if you want to, you know, get the, the reimbursements. But that's, that's a whole nother issue. But these, um, these moms and dads and people that are, you know, in the boosters club, they're just trying to help to raise, raise the money and I, you know, I hate to tie their hands as well. Especially since the state legislature has now given us the authority as a school system to, you know, allow these exemptions. And, and I know I'm, I'm on the health advisory committee and I know that this is contrary to what they've recommended and y'all can yell at me at the next meeting, but, um, you know, I'm, I'm speaking here as a, as a former mom and, you know, fundraiser for different organizations, particularly in the high school. But, you know, these, these kids, they're gonna make the choices and they, they can either stop at seven-eleven and buy it on their way to school.
Oh, well, they won't need to now.
Well, but, but that's, that's what happened when we stopped selling sodas. You know, they'd all stop and bring them in with them.
Um, would, uh, you guys have, are well down the road, so I, and I understand that. I, again, I find myself at, uh, it's an awkward position to be speaking for the, for the betterment of, of all the children and I understand what you're saying regarding, um, fundraising. We will be, as we move through this, you know, the concern of participation, concern of the, of the, of, of, of what you all count on the department to, to provide, um, as well as, you know, our directional, you know, nutritional direction, all those things are, are things you guys will, will ultimately decide on. We're, uh, the, the school nutrition program comes up in April for a week-long federal review. So there'll be a team of people visiting with us. And, and based on our agreement to be in the national school lunch program, we'll meet, we'll need to meet certain standards regarding smart snack implementation and how we do our thirty exemptions. So we'll need to be prepared.
And I'd like to see, you know, for the betterment of the kids, I'd like to see also how, what are you doing to, what is your shop doing to make sure that we are trying to make money? Are you doing things like the greatest hits program that other schools do that, that say, you know, we've done the analysis and, you know, these eight meals that are provided under the federal guidelines, we don't, we don't serve anymore because they never, they never make any money. So I would be very interested to see that, that data also.
Mr. Dr. Benson, I think, had a, a comment.
Just to add, and, and I know this is a, a very complicated issue, but we, we want our school lunch program to be a school lunch program and not a free lunch program such that we're serving all students in the, in the school. We also want it to be self-sustaining. I don't think the board wants to be in the business of, of looking to, to see that whether or not we have to, you know, uh, provide some funding to help it maintain its, um, place in the, in the school. So that's an important part. Right now, we're not there because we do have money that is generated from the school lunch program that comes back into the, into the school system. Um, I, I think the notion of where's the data to support, um, a potential negative impact, or it's not having an impact is pretty powerful. I had a, a fairly lengthy conversation today with Ms. Jacobson on the phone. They're not planning to expand the, the muffin cart at Brook. It seems to be doing really well. She's, I said, so what is it that you're looking for? She said, two days, you know, two days a week to sell, you know, the, the foods that the kids want to, to buy, not during breakfast or lunchtime. But then we have three days when we don't. So it'd be kind of interesting to look at meal sales on days when the cart's not sold versus what's being sold and, and we probably can get a handle on what gets sold, uh, just to see.
But then you have to look at what's being offered because I remember from my daughter's high school days, there were certain things that were offered on certain days and not every day. So it just depends on what you're competing with.
That actually came up in our conversation and that we should not choose to sell Chick-fil-A like things on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, right? The days when the carts were not out. So, I don't know. But in any case, there, there is an opportunity for us, I think, to take a look at, at whether or not there is any impact. And, and there, there may not be. We speculate that there may be. We have other folks that speculate there may not be. So let's, let's get some data.
If I could just say, I wanted to thank Mr. Sly. Please know, we're all trying to get to the right thing. You do such a great job in food service.
Thank you.
I mean, I think we can all...
We love you.
We do, and so...
Not wasting your position on...
Don't run away from us.
And we're all trying, and we're all trying to work this.
I'm passionate about it and it matters to me and, and so...
That's right.
And I think it's, I think it's important.
I have one other item, item that's, um, in the edit for thirty-one oh seven R, I believe. This is, um, it looks like it's what it's requiring is if any food from brought into the classroom, it has to be prepackaged commercially created. Um, and I understand food allergies and concerns of food allergies and such. I believe currently, if you make cupcakes for your kid for his birthday to take into a classroom, you have to provide, it has to be certain brands and you have to provide, um, the ingredients, at least at my kids' school.
It would vary, it would vary from school to school. That's what we're running into. This came from the health advisory committee, which was, uh, priorly with the nurses, I'm speaking for, uh, um, the nurses now, but the idea, it varies from school to school. Right now, there are no regs regarding or guidelines regarding what you bring from home, whether it's homemade, food or whatever.
Yeah, and that, that's what concerns me is that's gonna drive the cost up for a family who wants to celebrate their kid's birthday within the classroom. If they can't, you know, purchase Duncan Hines and make it at home, if they have to go to Food Line, purchase two or three of those plastic trays of, of cupcakes, which run about six bucks each, you know, it's gonna be a significant cost. So I have a lot of concern about that item as well. If we're not being pushed by a state regulation or federal regulation specifically, and I, you know, hey, my wife's a nurse and she's gonna shoot me. Um, if, if this is a, a, a specific nursing concern, I understand that, coming from them, and I understand the position that they're in. What I would prefer to see here is a standardized process for, throughout the county, for all of our schools, that enable, um, the bring-from-home, made, made-at-home, um, product. Um, and, you know, I know at, at Conway, the requirement is, it's certain brands and, um, you have to provide the, the ingredients from the box itself, you know, that you have to cut it out.
So we're essentially coming to the same point, only that it was, the idea would be as the, the person who has to deal with or try to protect a kid with allergies is the nurse and if they don't have the tools with which the ingredients are, then, there's no way to do that. That would be, that's the purpose in this.
I'm also a little worried about this, what it might do, because Dwayne, if I'm not mistaken, the cookie cart at Stafford utilizes, um, the culinary arts at some points and sells cookies made, baked within the school. Now, those aren't, those wouldn't be considered...
They do and it's three days a week at Stafford.
Yeah.
The north is five.
Commercially, so then we're...
Scouts, junk food, go on all day long.
Yeah, yeah. Two days at a point, three times. Yeah.
What it is, whatever it is, but, you know, my concern there again would be that then we're, we're, we're eliminating a function within the school where our students are actually producing what they, they're learning. And as I understand it, that partially fund goes to some funding that the culinary arts does. I'm not sure how exactly it works. So I have a concern with that, that particular line and I would like to, yeah, I, I, you know, I fully appreciate food allergies and what this is trying to accomplish, but I'm worried about the cost that's gonna drive up to families that want, want their child to be able to celebrate with all the students within the classroom, their birthdays, um, and also what it might do to our culinary arts.
Understood. Well, we, we brought this in front of you as, from the health advisory committee, it's a two-year, uh, recommendation and so we put it in the form of, of a, of a recommendation. So if it, if it's not what you choose to do, we can try to rewrite it or, um, you know, it's simply our recommendation, so...
I would, I would suggest to the board, as certainly I don't like to stifle discussion, however, I do feel like we have covered a lot of them. If when you leave here, some burning new issue about this comes forward, please forward it. I know Mr. Sly, you can find his email, but also to, um, Roberta, that she can share to the other board members if you leave here and there's something else, because I have two more, but I'm not going to go into it right now. So thank you very much for staying that late and coming before us. Eleven point oh eight, discuss a change to policy eighty-one oh one, community use of school facilities, equipment and regulation eighty-one oh one, our community use of school facilities and, and equipment, uh, for discussion. You wanna lead us?
Since it was brought up by myself and, uh, Mr. McCosker as a second, um, this obviously came from the email I think we all received from an Eagle Scout who was trying to hold a court of honor within a school. As I understand it, and I don't know if Mr. Haran, uh, was involved in the process at all, um, the application came through and there was a fee associated with that. I don't know what the, the exact fee was, that four hundred dollar figure was out there at some point.
Was that for one event?
Yeah, and as I understand, the current policy is to, for an organization like Scouts, specifically, boys, girls, Cubs, et cetera, they can have one event a year on a weekend without a fee, but if they, a, a school year, but if they go to two or more events, then they're, they're supposed to be assessed the fee. Now, I know a lot of our building administrators work with these organizations, and they find ways to make sure they're not charged a fee, but my opinion is, we should have a policy that makes it much more broad use of our schools for these types of organizations specifically. I'm a little concerned about opening it wide open, and I had suggested with Mr. McCosker that we make it 12 events per calendar year for a, a troop, a pack, the organization, you know, this, the individual organization, to be able to use a school facility on a weekend, and no change to the weeknight. I think the weeknights are pretty well-covered, but it's...
You're suggesting once a month?
Once, once a month, and, and they won't...
You know, our administrators have to be there.
Right.
Yeah, and so, that's why it, it provides, you know...
It's a number out there.
Yeah, it's, it's, frankly, yeah, it's a number out there, for lack of a better term. I think the way it's structured now is, is, is too restrictive, whether that's too unrestrictive. And, you know, I think that's where, we're at the point of discussion. You know, we, within our strategic plan development, there was a lot of discussion about schools being much more community-oriented and being available to the community, and community events occurring within the schools, and I think that's, this helps that go in that direction. Obviously, there's concern about staff, wear and tear in the schools, cleanup, et cetera. So, that's, that's the event stuff, or the scout stuff.
And I just, and, and Mr. Hyerins said it, you know, 12 is a number Mr. Hyerins put out there, and I said, "Well, we'll start with that." But, you know, Boy Scouts, I have kids in, I have kids in Cub Scouts, and I have kids in Boy Scouts in my family, right? And so, generally, the Boy Scouts, I mean, even if the school board said, "Hey, let's only make it six weekends a year," generally, they, they do their blue and gold banquet or a banquet-type-ish event. Generally, they do their Pinewood Derby for the Cub Scouts, and maybe the Boy Scouts would do something else on that weekend, and then a few others. And the few others would be, maybe the Eagle Ceremony on a weekend, maybe...
Court of Honors.
A Court of Honors. And so, you know, 12 is the number out there, realizing that we do have to have generally staff there. So, I, so we, you know, that's a starting point.
Ms. Egan.
Mrs. Haley had mentioned something earlier that seemed to me like a good starting point. I have a son in the Boy, 516, the troop that brought this to us. She had made a suggestion that, you know, this, this is going to be a broader discussion with the other speaker that we had tonight at Public Comment about political organizations and stuff, so this would be a perfect topic for, I don't know, a governance committee or something to take up. But I think she made the comment about, well, maybe we can, for now, until we have an opportunity to sit down and, and really dissect this and, and put it back together the right way, we could look at each of these individual requests, one by one, as they come in, and we'll approve them on a case-by-case basis, depending on what they need it for. So, I think that's a good starting point. I don't think we need to be going and making any blanket changes, because this is a big, comprehensive...
We need the whole thing redone.
Yeah, but just, the whole thing needs to be redone, so, that's my position.
We need to provide the administration, building administrators with the process to get that information to us as their process, you know, whether it's, go ahead and put the application in, and if it goes to the facilities, I believe, and, uh, facilities comes to us and says, "Do you want to make..."
Well, maybe they handle it like unusual field trips or something like that.
The only concern I have is I want to make sure the board is not tasking our administrators with some of their ability to say, "Wow, I have spent five days a week at my school, and now I'm going to be required to be there to oversee these events every weekend." I do want our staff to continue to have some of their family time.
Of course.
So, I'm, I guess I'm not sure how they're going to come to us, that we're going to look at it and say, "Is this one, that there is staff available to, to do it?" I don't want to be in the position of saying, "Okay, who of you is going to staff this event?" That's just my concern, because I feel that, you know, a lot of our administrators are there, especially, well, all of our schools.
Well, maybe the processes that they, that the organization goes through, the principal, the principal has a form that either's, you know, checks to recommend, or checks to deny, or checks to...
And says, "I have staff and do it."
Yeah, and that's... And, and then send it to us, and then we, yea or nay, and this...
And I would, I would, just real quick, I would just venture to say, we could give it a blanket of maybe three, if we, I have a concern, and I think a lot of, I don't think you'll hear a lot more than three weekends from a lot of troops and packs. I don't know. Maybe, it can't be more than one.
It's not just going to be Scouts. What about the Girl Scouts? What about the 4H? What about the Rotary Club? What about the...
It's open in the flag.
If, if I may, typically, the process is that the building administrators have the authority to say, "Yea, yea or nay," and we don't question a nay. So, if they say they can't support it, you know, it's their call. If they can support it, it comes to us. We make sure the numbers all track, you know, they're doing the right thing from a charging perspective or a noncharging, that the insurance is associated. And again, just a reminder, the schools are open for free to this CAT II group during the week. It's the weekends that are the issue. And as you just brought up, there are not only numerous Cub Scouts, Brownies, Bluebirds, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, packs and troops, and, and organizations 4H, there's several that are other national affiliated groups. So, it will increase, and we will, if you start doing it on the weekends, I think, the board may want to consider some type of fee for the supervision and the custodial. And that's why, that's why the weekends were limited in the first place. And, so, we're not, I, I don't think the school division has restricted the use from the Scouts, it's just on the weekend, and, and it was arbitrary, one, one, once, once a year, you know, for a particular pack, and it was for those like Pinewood Derby-type events, large, large banquets. We certainly didn't want to preclude an Eagle Scout from having his ceremony, or a Girl Scout from having her ceremony at the school where maybe their community project took place. That wasn't the intent.
It's a big, it's a big policy to take a good look at.
It is.
But can we now consider, not tonight, it's getting, it's almost tomorrow, perhaps to come back at the next meeting, a, an action item to permit the particular Eagle Scout that has made the request to be able to use the school at no cost? Because, you know, but for the troop having used it another time during the year, you know, they could have had this one, but in this instance, because of what this, this young man did for the benefit of the school, and, and wanting to be at the school where he did the work and, and gave the benefit to, I, I have no problem with that. I can't imagine anybody's...
Yeah, if he's still seeking to, I don't know if he's still seeking to or not.
I think as long as somebody, administration is going to...
Yeah, I can't, and I can't imagine, after working with this young man, that they wouldn't be honored to, you know, participate in it.
It can sometimes be a date, and we don't know all the facts. I always hate to opine.
Well, we can, we can, we can check on that, but I would think that, that we, as a school division, would want to go out of our way to help somebody who has done so much to help us, you know, in, in a school. And if that particular building doesn't have someone, perhaps we could, you know, look for a volunteer, or maybe Mrs. Cale would be willing. Gail, do you remember the elementary school days?
Moving, is there, is there a sense among the board about what Ms. Egan just referred to, that Ms. Haley mentioned earlier? Okay, that was convoluted, regarding that we would like to consider anything tonight regarding those requests?
I have a specific request.
Okay.
Stafford County Republican Committee is looking to utilize a school on Saturday, March 5th. I believe the only thing restricting them from asking availability is the, the prohibition on campaigning and how that's interpreted. What I would like to do is allow them to approach schools of their choice...
Any political party.
And the administrator still has full right of refusal, you know, whatever the process is, to say, say yes or no, but that their limitation, or that they, we give them the ability to ask the building administrators. They want to use a high school. They, they are holding a mass meeting, which they, they anticipate as many as four or 500 people showing up to. There are not many facilities within Stafford County to, to hold an event like that outside of a school.
What about the represent tent there?
Do you know the cost of... That's a struggle, isn't it?
My only concern with that is if, if we, if we, as a board right now, approve that, we're violating our, our policy for a specific political organization. I would say that, and I'm not opposed for that, any political organization to use that if, if this board decides they want to adjust the policy, but I, or make a waiver to the policy, but if, if we do make a waiver to the policy, if we have to take an action item and have a waiver to the policy, I think the, the language needs to be very generic and not necessarily identifying...
Well, it's a specific request on a specific day, though.
Well, then, I think we need to address the policy, if we're going to change the policy. I think that's...
And I, I don't care if we, if we, if we, if, if you'll accept a motion that says, "Waive the policy for the next 60 days," and 90 days, and we will, you know, look deeper into this policy. I, I'm...
When is this supposed to be?
March 5th.
March 5th is...
So, in order to get a, a facility, I will tell you, during sports seasons, it's going to be difficult, that allowing, allowing the request to be filed before we would meet again, I'm trying to see, how can we do this and allow that if possible?
You can't, it has to be done tonight, or, or they are out of time, and, and they have to find someplace else, you know. I, I don't have a big...
We have to change our whole policy.
I don't have a big dog in this fight.
I think what, one thing we could do is to agree that we want to review the policy for potential changes. I mean, part of our strategic plan, part of everything is, we want to be accessible to the community. This is something that, you know, it's time to relook at this. I mean, we don't want people out there campaigning during the school days, but if a political party, any political party or group, wants to use the schools, and they're willing to, you know, do, you know, what's required, you know, why shouldn't they? They're paying for the schools. We can certainly agree to, to review the policy. My concern is making an exception this evening, when we have not yet changed or reviewed the policy. And I think we need to have the specifics. I think what we could do this evening is to task the superintendent with coming back to the board at some point after the budget season, you know, with a, with any proposed revisions to this policy, getting input from us and from the community, and agreeing that we will entertain making an exception to this policy. I mean, we make the policy, Mr. Nelson, could we not make exceptions to any policy that we have?
You can have that authority.
Sure, we have that authority, so that, that to put that on the agenda for the next meeting, meanwhile, they can go and, and check out the schools and see which one, you know, is available and that they would like to request, and then put that on for action at the next meeting.
We need to make sure those building administrators are open to the discussion.
Well, Dr. Benson...
And they have...
You can send out an email.
Dr. Benson can find out, you know, which, which schools, or I assume it's going to be the high schools, or just, you know, take care of that communication. But we could have both, an exception to that policy, to permit this specifically and narrowly, to permit a meeting on March 5th, you said, pending...
The next meeting's on the 23rd, right?
Yeah, so...
So, we'd be able to do it in the summer.
Yeah, we can do that, but let's put that, that Boy Scout on there, too.
But they're, you know, the...
The Eagle Scout. We can't approve it if we don't know where it's going to be, and we don't know that the administrators, you know, going to be available.
And, and that's fine, and, um, they're not going to be able to use it if we don't do something tonight, because they have all these call requirements, publishing requirements prior to the event.
Well...
Why don't they come to us earlier?
Um, yeah.
Well, is, well, could, so is there any...
Could we agree to give the superintendent the permission to, you know, permit the exception to the policy, accept the application, you know, pending the availability of the facility and the, you know, that it's, it's a timely request? I, I just don't see how we can approve something this evening that isn't even concrete. We, I, I kind of like that idea. What we could do is, we could authorize superintendent to use the authority to make an exception to the policy, given those parameters that, that, that the, the Republican organization wants to use one of the buildings, if, if they can make the appropriate arrangements with a specific school, we can authorize him, and then also ask him to bring forward that policy for review and, and a possible revision.
In the summer.
In the summer, yeah. And, and also, don't forget that, that Eagle Scout. Can we have that? That can come back at the next meeting, it's not that urgent, but, you know, that has got to be a prime example of where an exception should be made. I'm going to make a formal motion, then. I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to go ahead and go forward and entertain an exception to that policy for that particular organization on that particular day, and then a further review this summer of the policy.
Second.
May, I would like to make sure, as I, as...
Sounds good to me.
Then they can. The only addition, I would say, is as I read the request, or as I heard the speaker say, that they wanted to be treated as other organizations. I do not believe that this waiver makes the insurance, any of the other required...
No.
Okay, I just, I just want that clear.
The only, the only thing that's stopping them right now to be, like any other, is the prohibition on campaigning environments, and that's, that's all this is trying to accomplish, is just take that restriction. They still have to go through the whole process and, and, you know, find an administrator who's willing to host them, willing to be there, charge whatever fees charged, et cetera.
I wasn't arguing, I just felt that that, they made that very clear as well, and I wanted to make sure that we were clear.
And both the Democrat Party and the Republican Party still have their initial Board of Supervisors chambers for their meetings every, every Saturday.
Yeah.
It's just when the parties have these large things, that's where they get stuck.
Frankly, I've had conversations with chairs of both the party organizations over the last four years. I've always told them, "You got to count to us," and, and ask for it, and, you know, finally, tonight, they did, so, you know.
So, I hear a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure Dr. Benson's clear on what we're authorizing him to do. We don't want to...
It's so, it's so, it's so late.
What? You're authorized to vote for the Reform Party? Vote, vote on them.
He's thinking about getting up at six tomorrow morning for a run, right?
I'm serious. You got it, you got it.
You have, we have a single exception, that you're granting me the authority to...
Accept the application. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes, or direction, really, for our superintendent. Okay, I've gotten off my page. All right, board, it is 11:10.
13. We were just going to close this.
Okay.
No, 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 uh-uh. We're not getting elected.
Sit back down. I'm not the chair, but you need to sit back down.
It's too late for the January report.
We are now February.
Lance, I know you're, um, I was going to ask, what the feeling of the board? Please, this is not against Mr. Wolf. He has worked very hard on this. This is important information, however...
There is some information associated with it that was requested by the board, though.
Okay.
Yes, let, let him submit the information. I promise I won't ask any questions.
Can you ask your questions?
On your own time.
At the next meeting, or at any point that's convenient for you.
Thank you.
And this has to do with an update on all the transfers, broken down between what is greater than 10,000, not, and what we had in this last quarter, where 19 transfers in excess of $10,000. So, we really are really putting the, the brakes on the amount of transfers.
19 is compared to 14,000, yeah, to 1,400.
I would invite the board members to review this information. If you have additional questions, we do have places we can ask this again, we will bring it back, but, otherwise, I would access to move on to closed session, 13.01, and...
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, no, oh, did I miss one?
Well, I'm, I'm actually going to do two, two things. One is, I, as part of my update to the board, as we're, we're talking about financial matters, I did, to the supervisors, told them that the, the forensic audit was underway, and that it started prior to the winter break. We had gone through a couple of rounds of interviews, provided a variety of electronic information to, to the folks that are doing that, so it's in progress. I, I can't say at what point we'll get some interim report, but I want the board to be aware of that. And then, if it, if it pleases the board, the items that we have for discussion for, for closed session are not necessarily time-sensitive, it's not something we have to do tonight.
We, we also, I believe, on the, at our work session, we do a special called meeting, we can cover those items on the 20th.
On the 20th.
Good to meet you.
Because it also may also go with our budget discussions and other things at that time.
My second thought, let's all be back. Go upstairs, Dan.
Thus, we will be deferring item, items, let's see, 1301, 1401, 02, and, well, 1201. 1201, sorry.
1301.
All the rest of them, just say all the rest.